Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started.
Is it projecting?
Oh, I couldn't hear it.
Oh, maybe it is.
All right. Welcome to the August 25th, 2025 Regular City Commission Meeting, starting at 6:02 PM. All right, no announcements, we are going to go right into Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that moves us on to approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. All right, may I be called the role? Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Ree?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All right, this section is now public comment. This is for items that are on the consent agenda or not on our agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and come to the podium to state your name and address.
I'd like to leave the fluff out because I only have three minutes, but I have to say when I filled out my form that you turn in, at the bottom it says a special place on the lake, and I think that we can all agree that that's what our goals are in this in this turnaround of the world. I have four suggestions for the crosswalk issue at where the market goes across the street in a dangerous position right there. And the first one, I'm just going to run through these quickly. One is we had an RSVP, which was a volunteer senior citizen police group at one time. I think they could be resurrected, no joke intended, but they could be reformed into being used as crossing guards. Another is that we have crossing guards during the school year that could be brought, they already have vests, they already have stop signs that they could be brought forward to do that during the summer. We have ambassadors that were supposed to be doing parking meter, paid positions, teaching people how to use the parking meters. There's money already set aside so that they could be crossing guards at these locations. And the last is, my own experience, and I grew up in Washington DC, and in the northwest suburbs, there's an avenue called Connecticut Avenue, and it's very busy. It's four lanes with no island, it's much narrower than this than our main street is. There's parking on both sides of the road, except during rush hour. The only way to cross, because there are stoplights too close together, the only way to get across that street, because there's a library and churches on one side, there's businesses on the other side of the street, is a very, very busy place. They came up with something that was very clever. It's not 100% successful, but it has worked, and they've used it for quite a number of years, and bear with me. I had a stop sign, but I left it at home. On one side of the road, there is a PVC pipe attached to a post, like a yield post or, you know, a metal post, and in that are hand-carried stop signs. And on the other side of the street is another PVC pipe attached to another post. When you cross the road, you pick up your sign, you walk across the street and drop it on the other side, and the person crossing back picks up, and there are like four of them on each side. And I thought it was the most ingenious, simple, little, small-town thing in a big city I've ever seen, and it was, and it has worked. Like I said, it's not 100% successful, but we need something to get us to 2027. We cannot risk another family or someone being maimed or killed. It would be devastating to all of us, I think. And you were elected because you care about our city and because you care about humanity, and you care about the people who come here to visit, spend their money here, support us, and are your own residents. So I hope you'll move on one of these things as a temporary fix. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any time left?
Yeah, and we need your name and address, too.
Oh, all right, there goes my time. Lois Goldrick, 333 Ridgeway, St. Joe. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Barry Michaels. I live at 2800 Veronica Drive, been a city resident for 28 years. Was on the planning commission for 10-plus years and saw several of the major developments in this community go through, including Whirlpool Field, Shadowland, Chapin Hall, CVS, Jefferson School, and the original PUD for the YMCA project that is now called the Marquette Project. And I'm just questioning the purchase agreement that's potentially-
We are going to be discussing that later, so if you have public comment specifically on the market, we'll reserve that for that, a specific item.
Purchase agreement for the parking lot.
Yes. Yep, so we're discussing that later. This, this public comment is for anything that's not on the agenda.
But you can come back up again.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Any other public comment for items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda?
Hi, Mary Goff, 2311 South State. I have some comments about the development in general.
The Marquette?
Pardon me?
For the Marquette building?
Yes.
That will be, again, reserved for later in the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments not on the agenda or on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move along to the consent agenda. Items include meeting minutes of August 11th, 2025, invoice and tax dispersments, quarterly investment report, PA 20, seasonal vendor application, private property Chick-fil-A, John Ian Howard Banshel painting, and 2024 Public Engagement Report. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All right, Abby call the role. Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Ree?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
All right, our first order of business on old business is the Marquette Purchase Agreement.
Oh, that's me, and I'm changing batteries, but not him that's going to change batteries. Well, I am going to be joined momentarily, when they get a microphone, by Peter Rinks and Terry Malloy, to speak about the Marquette Project. We've been working with Peter and Terry-
So some microphones do work. We've been working with Peter and Terry for quite some time now, and back in June passed a resolution in support of moving forward with this project. Staff has worked closely with the property subgroup on this purchase agreement that is coming before you today. The purchase agreement is to move forward with the project as they've presented, 100-unit project, mixed use with some market rate apartments factored in there, which means up to 120% AMI. The project is very much in keeping with our economic development strategy and our downtown Vision Master Plan, both of which call for additional housing, additional mixed-use development to sort of spur development in the downtown, continue to build on the vibrancy of the downtown, and add to our housing, which right now our housing study says we need about 900 housing units in the next five years. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter and Terry to give their presentation. Right on cue, Tim, thank you.
Let's see here, getting it on the screen.
I'm working on it.
I'm excited to get this far. It's pretty exciting. And yeah, so thank you, everybody, for coming. There's been a lot of work that's gone into the project this far to get it to where it's at. And for the sake of time, I'll jump right into it to start with the recap of the project overall. For some of you that aren't aware or familiar with it, if you scroll down to the next slide.
Actually, if you could download it and then open it up, that doesn't take too much time, otherwise it's a bit of formatting, but not a big deal.
That was quick.
Just hit slideshow at the top there.
Better?
Great, yeah, perfect. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so the Marquette is a 100-unit mixed-use development that's planned for the lot between Pleasant Street and Broad Street, right on Lake Boulevard. And so those 100 units will be made up of 32 condos on the top three floor, 68 apartments on the middle three floors, and 12,000 square feet of retail space on the ground level. And then at a minimum, 157 underground parking spaces. We're also going to have a courtyard with a rooftop deck, as well as a pool inside the building for the residents. And the economic impact, we'll dig into this a little bit more, but high level, it's a $55 million investment into the city of St. Joe. It's going to create significant increases in tax revenue, and there'll be an estimated increase of 50 permanent jobs in the building. Next slide. So here are a few pictures of it. We brought some boards, too, to show it as well. The picture top left is a view standing in front of shoes, looking down the street. Right now, it's a grassy lot with a parking lot in front of it. The picture top right would be the image from if you just walked to the top of the stairs, coming up from Silver Beach or the pizza, Silver Beach Pizza. And then the bottom one would be a view standing at the farmer's market, looking across the street. Next slide. So I always like to point back to the master plan. That's kind of a little bit how we got into this. When I started TRG six years ago, I've always been really passionate about St. Joe. When I was a kid, I grew up in Edwardsburg, Michigan, in a modest household, and we didn't go to Disney World on vacation. We didn't travel, we didn't fly anywhere. Our vacations were a day at Silver Beach. And so when I started TRG, it was how can we invest in St. Joe? And so we bought our first building. It's the Rice Block Building with Jimmy John's and seven apartments above it about five years ago. And right then, it was getting involved with some local politics and getting to know the city manager, and how do we help make this town better and reach its full potential? And so when this master plan came out, I read the whole thing, cover to cover. And the goals of the master plan were to reinforce the downtown district's character and sense of place while accommodating desirable infill development, and then to strengthen the downtown as a vibrant and active year-round mixed-use district. And I'm sorry for reading slides, but this is important. So the next slide says, these are excerpts from the city of St. Joe's master plan. So this shows a map of all of the key development sites in the master, master plan. And the orange sites are primary sites, and the blue sites are secondary sites. And you'll notice, if you're familiar with the downtown, there's some existing structures on some of these properties, as well as parking lots or just empty lots in general. The sites we're talking about are sites three, three and four, which have been- Four and five. Yep, I need glasses already. Four and five, and those have already been identified as primary sites for development. So the next slide is a quote directly from the master plan. Both the grass lot and the parking lot were, or note that both the grass lot and the parking lot were specifically noted as primary development opportunity sites. And then a quote from the master plan says, "Along much of Lake Boulevard, individuals are confronted with unscreened, unsightly parking lots, vacant lots, and interspersed structures. Approximately 80% of the east side frontage of Lake Boulevard is parking lots and a vacant lot." And then the recommendation from the consultant was, "Ideally, the city should encourage appropriate infill development of the surface lots that will create a consistent building-street wall along the roadway. This will also provide opportunities for new shops, restaurants, mixed-use buildings, and other uses that'll bring greater excitement to Lake Boulevard." I couldn't agree more. Next slide. Okay, Terry's going to talk about this one.
Yeah, so there are two cornerstone studies that we, we had come across early on that helped to form our opinion and recognize that this was both a need in the community and that there was pent-up demand. The first of which is that there's a housing study done in 2024. A little hard to see the numbers up there, but that top light-blue strip is for Benton Harbor. The bottom is for St. Joe. If you look all the way to the right, which I can't see that for the life of me, but there's 900 housing units over the next five years, starting in 2024 to 2028, that the housing study recommended St. Joe needs in order to prevent or to forestall the already ongoing population decline and to meet existing demand. When you look at what happens if you don't meet housing demand, you have outmigration of professionals. You also have the potential for increased prices just because of limited supply and difficulty attracting businesses, among other things. Next slide. So this was also echoed in the economic development report that Cornerstone had commissioned. Two of the four major points that they had called out, one of which was lack of available housing. And the second one, if you want to switch slides, was a missed market opportunity. So what the consultants had come back with after studying the area and looking across their models for communities across the country is that in this area, 100 new housing units would bring $5.5 million of consumer spending to St. Joe and the surrounding target area. So, you know, clearly a win, you know, both for, you know, to meet the housing need and to improve the life for the businesses around the area. Next slide. So when we speak about market rate housing, where we are getting our data and our numbers is from the state of Michigan. So the state of Michigan every year publishes by county the median, area median income, and then breaks that down across different percentiles. So, you know, we're aiming at between 100 and 120% of area median income, or that those apartments are affordable to, to those who are making within that range. And that's where we're setting the rents for that. So there is, you know, I know that there's been talk about this, but we are not allowing any STRs, any short-term rentals in the apartments. That will not be allowed, and the rents will fall within that range. I think that's about it for that slide. Next one.
Just to add a little bit with what Terry was saying, the 68 apartments are critical to this project succeeding because we could have done or proposed an all condo scenario. And, but the all condo scenario wouldn't have helped solve the seasonality issue in St. Joe. And so your council members have been committed to that being a consistent part of the project, and we're committed to that being a consistent part of the project. We need to help our, the seasonality of St. Joe and bringing those 68 apartments, which might be, you know, 100, 120 residents downtown, every single day, sleeping there, is going to help all of our local businesses, our restaurants, and gas stations and grocery stores. And that's a vital part of the project that we think is very important to succeeding. So just, I'm going to talk one minute on the design, because I know we're, we're over time here. But the design is something that's really important to us. We have beautiful buildings in, in St. Joe, and it's full of classical architecture. Classical architecture has the columns and the arches and the beautiful cornices. And so this image is an example of what we want the wraparound kind of breezeway of the building to be like, that it would interact and open up with the sidewalk, and the residents can kind of weave in and out of the building as well as provide an outdoor dining experience for the people eating at the restaurant. Next slide. So already, we have some great examples of limestone facade buildings in St. Joe. And so that's the St. Joe Today Building and the Wanderlust Building, as well as the Farmers Bank in Benton Harbor. But they're beautiful facades and great design, and that's what we're trying to capture with the Marquette, is a play on that. And next slide is an example of some more classical architecture. Next slide. This is an example of modern architecture. You've seen this. You've seen, these are going up everywhere, all over the place. It's modern apartments. It's cheaper to build it this way. You're using more straight lines. You can build a little bit faster, and that is not what we're going for. We don't want the building to look modern at all. And so if you go to the next slide, it's a comparison between the two, the Marquette and, and modern. And hopefully you can see that we're really trying to embrace the beautiful architecture in downtown St. Joe and enhance the vibrancy of this beautiful city. Next slide, that might be it. Oh, last thing, very important. The Marquette would be the fourth tallest building in downtown. The Lakeview Terrace is 136, the Wickham's 127, Silver Beach Hotel is 82 feet, and we're targeting 80 feet for the Marquette. Also worth noting is that the Inn at Harbor Shores is taller, and Lighthouse Point condominiums are taller. So in the city of St. Joe, it's the sixth tallest building, but it would be the fourth tallest downtown. And then that might be, oh, thank you. Okay, and that's it. That's it for me.
Thank you. Jump back in for a second. Thank you, guys. I was all kerfuffled by the microphone, so I just want to add a few more details, which is, again, as I said, we've already passed a resolution of conditional support here in June. The agreement that the property subgroup and staff worked on lays out details of what a sale would look like. It includes the purchase price, which is based on an appraisal of the lot. It includes expectations for closing dates, for financing, expectations for public parking requirements, and a right of first refusal. The Rinks Group also plans to pursue a brownfield redevelopment TIF, and if approved, additional project details would be established through the TIF agreement. The purchase agreement also includes gaining alignment on a development agreement. So this is one of many steps. It's another step forward, for sure, but it has a lot of additional thresholds that need to be met as the city goes forward.
Correct. So to reiterate, the presentation you just showed us, very beautiful, lovely, that is not 100% set in stone. These are ideas right now. Tonight, we're just focusing on the sale, the resolution for the sale of the lot, and we're not approving any of this stuff. These are just what you're having in mind at this point.
That's correct.
Right, the purchase agreement does include aspects of the proposed project, like the number of units, the breakdown roughly of condos versus apartments, the fact that there will, would be AMI, area median income caps on those apartments, the fact that it would be mixed use with commercial space, as well as meeting the parking requirements and maintaining in perpetuity 57 public parking spaces.
Thank you. Questions from the commission?
Well, I'm just going to ask one, because I know people are asking it, and I've talked to you about it before. But what is the assurance that we have that if you go forward and how can we be sure that it's not going to be a half-built thing that you leave us?
Yeah, so there's multiple layers of due diligence. Honestly, the, the bank is going to be one of the biggest proponents to de-risking the project to make sure that the engineering is fully complete, that it's been stamped and vetted. It's going to make sure that all the necessary approvals are in place. It's going to make sure that all the equity is in place. And they're, they're the ones that are really going to be sticking their neck out and making sure that's approved. The other thing is that we've assembled a, an all-star team with Avon Marsh Consultants and Krugel Lawton Tax Advisors and Creek Develop Attorneys, as well as Fishbeck Consultants, Michigan Growth Advisors, Cornerstone's been a great consultant. And so we really have brought together the right people to take out all of those risks, as many of those risks as we can.
Have you explored the option of a performance bond?
Yes, we have, and that's something that we're considering requiring of our contractors. However, it does add a significant layer of additional cost. And so when you sign guaranteed maximum price contracts with vetted and qualified contractors, that is a, a great legal document to hold them accountable for milestones and deliverables. And so would love to talk to you about that in the development agreement stage, if, if that makes sense. And, but we're considering it, but it's not planned currently.
Correct. And so the development agreement, there's a lot more things that could happen. I mean, this is just the primary agreement for the parking.
Yep, there's a-
And so the developments, yeah, agreement.
Within the purchase agreement, there are conditions precedent to closing.
Certainly more, more milestones to cross, but you know, as, as you gentlemen highlighted, this, you know, what can be achieved at that site is, you know, rather than a parking lot, which will be replaced, you know, the same access to those 57, you know, spaces that are in the lot today will continue to be available to the public once this project is complete, so we don't lose anything from that. And in, you know, next to it on the grass field, there will be 100 new households, you know, of people. And it is such a better use of space than a vacant parking lot that will serve to only enrich our downtown. And with that added investment, you know, will lead to more things that we can do beyond just the downtown. Doing everything that we can to bring more vibrancy to downtown gives us the ability to spill that over into the rest of the city and sustain us year-round.
I would say the commission has been kept appraised of everything, and we've gone to numerous meetings, and we have two great commissioners on the subcommittee that have kept us up to date and everything. So, so we feel like we know a lot already, and, you know, yes.
I move to approve the resolution to approve the agreement for sale of real estate as presented.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? For public comment, yeah.
Hi, my name is Janita Galzetti, and I live at 315 Murphy Court. I had a nice chance to talk to many of the people on the team on, at an informational session. Sorry, I talked to many of the team members involved in the development at an informational session at the library on, on Thursday. So thank you to the library for hosting that. It was, it was great. They went through this presentation and then spent lots of time talking to residents in much more detail. I was also one of the people that night that expressed a serious interest in either renting or buying one of those condominiums. So I do think by the end of the evening, Peter and team had talked to probably about 20 people or so who are truly interested, you know, who live here now and really would like to, the opportunity to, to live there. Just for context, I've vacationed here my whole life from southeast Michigan. My mom grew up in Niles, so this is, this is where our heart and vacations always were. I owned a tiny cottage in Stevensville for about 30 years, and five years ago, I moved here full-time and just recently retired. Four of my friends from the Detroit area who learned about St. Joe and the area through me have also since moved from the Detroit area here and purchased homes. It's always kind of broken my heart to see that empty lot for so long, because it's, you know, it's such a beautiful view and has so much potential. So I've always been curious about, you know, what would happen to the lot and how the city could take best advantage of it. Several small cities in southeast Michigan have built new housing that attracts young professionals and empty nesters like myself, as, which is a demographic that you know is growing. Cities like Berkeley, Claussen, Ferndale have attracted new residents by adding housing and bringing new tax revenues and vibrancy to those. So I've, I've seen it work really successfully in southeast Michigan. As Peter showed you, typically that new housing is modern in design, which is not, I don't think, a good fit for St. Joe. The development group has been very thoughtful about the design. The building design and materials are right for our special place on the lake, in my opinion, including the community engagement features on the Lake Bluff street side. I think those would be great. I feel like the small-town charm and culture of St. Joe doesn't, it doesn't exist in the dwellings of St. Joe or the buildings that is provided by the people and businesses who live and work here, and I think always will be. The idea is just to get more people downtown to do that. This project does both, and it creates room for both, both residents and businesses. I really think it's important for, for St. Joe's future, which I am now a part of, and so I'm in support of the Marquette Project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got, right over here. Oh, you just have a question? Okay, then Andrew, you're next.
Can you tell me what the road frontage is of, that this occupies, the size of the property being-
Do we, do we even-
On Lake, on Lake Boulevard?
Go ahead, go ahead and ask your question.
The actual road frontage, what is the road frontage that's being purchased on Lake Boulevard?
Go ahead and ask your questions. We'll see if we can answer them by the end.
And then what is the average tax realized per unit? And the last one is, what's the total square footage of housing?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Hahn. I am the Senior Vice President.
I am the Senior Vice President of Community Development and Growth at Cornerstone Alliance. And I'm just going to take a quick moment to read a letter from our Board of Directors. Dear Mayor Commissioners, please accept this letter in support of the proposed Marquette on Lake Boulevard. As the lead economic development organization for Marion County, Cornerstone Alliance is dedicated to supporting job growth, investment, increased tax base, and the creation of new housing within Marion County. Today, Marion County and the communities within are at a crossroads. Population continues to decline, housing prices continue to increase, and municipal budgets are constrained. Further, primary employers cite inadequate housing supply as a critical need slowing their ability to grow and attract talent. Cornerstone Alliance addresses, I'm sorry. The Marquette addresses each of those challenges directly, providing much-needed housing inventory, creating new jobs, needed municipal revenue, and an estimated $5.5 million of new consumer spending in local businesses annually. This project is consistent with the city's 2016 master plan, the 2019 vision, downtown vision master plan, and the 2024 economic development strategy, each of which was informed by significant community input. Importantly, this project affords City Commission the opportunity to shift the narrative. Support for this project sends a clear message that St. Joseph is development-ready, open for business, and welcoming of growth and investment. Cornerstone Alliance strongly supports this project and the transformational impact it will have on the city of St. Joseph. We urge you to move forward today with the sale of the city-owned parcel on Lake Boulevard to support the development of the Marquette. As an organization and as a group of leaders, we are committed to supporting the city as the project moves through additional community engagement and approvals. That's signed by Pam Klein, Chair of our Board of Directors, and our CEO, Marla Schneider, who sends her regrets tonight. And represented on our board are Convergex, American Electric Power, Avon Marsh Consultants, Fifth Third Bank, Honor Credit Union, Villa Environmental Consultants, Horwell Health South, Manova Medicine, Indiana Michigan Power, Freedom Finishing, United Federal Credit Union, Harbor Shores Community Redevelopment, Huntington Bank, First Source Bank, and Vale Rubber Works. So we support this project unequivocally, and there are lots of steps still to make sure that this is the right fit for the community. But based on the work we've committed, we're confident that it is, so thank you.
Thank you. Peter, Terry, did you have any answers to any of those questions? If you don't, it's fine. I don't know where you went. Okay.
We'll follow up with that.
Okay. I know it's kind of early to answer some of those, these questions, but if you had them off the top of your head.
They're there, just not with us in our brains.
Yeah, fair enough. All right, thank you. I saw another one over here.
First of all, I want to say that I'm not opposed to development, and I think that this is a very ambitious plan. My concern is that the commission has not made a lot of this public. You have discussed with the developers and whoever your investors are, but you have not made a lot of details known to the general public. In the past, we have always had several meetings when we did all our projects, including the Howard Ice Arena and CBS and Whirlpool. So my concern is, I'd like to know how much the city... Who did you use to appraise the properties? And did you use more than one appraisal? And are you, are the developers paying the same amount for the city as well as the Monty property? I understand its potential tax base, but I do not think we need to sell out the price at a low ball because of the coming on of the tax base. It's a beautiful piece of property, and I guarantee you, there are people all along this lake and Chicago who would be happy to purchase those properties. So I'm a little concerned about how you arrived at the price point. And I'm, and I'm concerned that you're not communicating with, with the residents. And I don't know how you can change that. I realize a lot of people don't take the paper. They don't have radios. But in the past, we have always had public meetings to have input, more than three minutes, for people to come. And I, I'm surprised none of you, did you ever ask a question that maybe it might be a little large for the area? Or were there any modifications that could be made? And my other concern is your 57 spots. They are not designated for anybody. So the people who live in the condos and the apartments can very well take those over. Where are you planning to push the, the parking into the neighborhoods when we have our Chalk the Block or the Art Fair? I, I am really concerned. And I don't know, maybe you've had those discussions, but I haven't heard them. So I would appreciate a little more openness in your communication. I feel like you're working for the developers and not for the residents of the city.
Can we get your name and address, please? Name and address, please?
And I'll just jump in to add that we worked with one firm who did an appraisal, and we're happy to make that public. We can add it to the website for anyone who wants to review it.
And I think the library was public, the, when they presented it.
That was unaffiliated with us, but yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think a good reference point, too, was a few years back, we had the Curious Kids Museum property, Memorial Hall appraised, as well as the adjacent parking lot. So as a point of reference, just going back a few years, that's another, I guess, metric to use as a gauge. And it, it appraised significantly less with the building than the empty lot appraised for, so.
Please.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Whipper. I come forward today as a representative of Whirlpool Corporation. I am, it's a great position I have to lead the Global Real Estate Department at Whirlpool. And I've worked a lot with the commission and the city to do a lot of great work in this area and surrounding areas, and really across the globe for Whirlpool. And I, I come forward today to offer support for the project and to lift up a reminder to the community that about two years ago, we opened and developed and constructed the Emma Jean Hall apartment complex just across the bridge in Benton Harbor. And we did that as a catalyst to really show future developers that there is a market for market-rate housing in this area. And it was such an overwhelming response rate. You know, we come up with all sorts of models and projections for how long it would take an 80-unit building to get fully occupied. And that, that rate is usually a year plus. We were fully occupied in six months. So the demand for housing in this area exists, and we are very excited to see that developers have taken note of, of our efforts and some other employer efforts to bring affordable housing to the community.
Thank you. Other public comment? Please.
Hi, I'm Joel Schinnerberry, 15-year resident and concerned citizen, and very interested in this project. I had just heard about it today from a friend, and I was not necessarily against it or for it, but I wanted to hear more about it, being a, a local resident and knowing this will directly impact our lives going forward. I have deep concerns about the purchase price of Lot 4 compared to Lot 5. I've heard different numbers thrown around. I was wondering, what are the purchase prices of the two lots? And are they the same? And if not, why not? I'm sure they've probably considered handicap parking. We have a severely disabled daughter in a wheelchair. It's hard to get her downtown St. Joe, and there's never many handicap spots. We have an eight-foot-tall handicap van, and we can never get her downtown to park. We have to park far and walk. And I'm just hoping they consider more ADA-compliant accessibility for people in wheelchairs, wheelchair vans, and, and just everybody who's disabled in general. It'd be a shame to lose... There's only four handicap spots in the lot you're talking about selling, and those are always full and not always with people who have handicap needs. So I could enjoy the city having more spots as possible, but I know it's a struggle. So I just want to say, we would like a little more information and the residents about this project, and definitely consideration for equally accessible to all people, handicap and not. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to jump in for one second to share. We will post the appraisal. The appraised value is $700,000, which is the amount reflected in the purchase agreement. That is for the lot that the city owns, the city-owned parking lot. We are not in any way involved in the agreement between the Rinks Group and the owner of the private lot just to the north, which is the other parcel necessary for this project. So we don't know the value of that, nor can we share any details about that. But we can share all of the information that's relevant on the appraisal and the sale of our city-owned lot.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna Altonar, and I live at 1910 Lake Shore Drive. And I have lived in St. Joe for over 25 years. I've lived in various parts of this country, and I've been blessed to be able to do that. But I really am blessed to call St. Joe my home. So I would like to speak a little bit about this. I grew up in a really small town, similar to the area. We were loaded with agriculture, and we had a small downtown. Our town was like a lot of other towns. Something, we were struggling, but it was a nice place to live. Something magical happened in the late 80s. A few people thought about the what-if. What if, what if we developed our town a little bit more? What if we took advantage of our agricultural roots? What if we built a bigger downtown around it? Adding hotels and adding businesses. Yes, for many, the change was very scary, and many opposed the change. But thoughtful development took place, and our valley grew. The development took a long time, but suddenly, our best asset was utilized with our downtown and our agriculture. Buildings went up amongst the old, creating an exciting look, a mix of looks, and it was really nice, like we're seeing on this PowerPoint. Our town became a destination, and our tax base for the city went up. The difference between St. Joe and my small town, St. Joe is already a destination. People love to come here, and they want to come. I fully support the development of the marquee building and the sale of the lot. I am excited to see what can become. Change is hard, but moving forward will only be harder for all the residents and will only keep St. Joe overall held back for the future generations to come. I believe this is the beginning of a thoughtful development, and I'm excited to see the benefits we all can enjoy, with many of the most significant advantages being the extra income that will benefit our city and its residents. And I hope the commission votes for the sale and supports this development that we see tonight. And oh, by the way, my small town that I'm talking about, maybe some of you have heard it, is the Napa Valley.
Cute.
Well, good evening. I've never actually spoken to the commission before, so I'm thankful for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Sam Adlomore, 1910 Lake Shore Drive, same as the lady that just spoke. I, I came, I came here in 1977. I came here to go to work for Whirlpool. And when I got here, there was this quaint little downtown. And I thought it was very special because it was right on the lake. All these years later, it's still that quaint little downtown, and I haven't seen any improvement in the downtown area in all those years, or very little. You know, I spent 41 years at Whirlpool, and one thing we focused on every day is, if you don't grow, you die. And St. Joe is very close to being a town that nobody wants anymore. And if we happen to lose one of the largest employers in this area, Whirlpool Corporation, and there's been speculation about it for the last couple of years, I think it would devastate this, this community we live in. So for these guys to come along and offer to build a project with their reputation for $55 million, and you heard Andrew Hahn talk about the economic impact it would bring, is not only a blessing, but it's something we should all be proud of, that they chose St. Joe to build this project. My opinion is, it won't be big enough. My opinion is, it'll sell out very quickly, and they'll be sad they didn't build it bigger. I can tell you that I'm, I'm, I'm part of the Harbor Shores development team from the very beginning. We thought it would take us 15 years to sell all the lots and build houses on them, and it took about a third of that time. This is something needed. This would be a jewel in our community. These guys, from everything I've seen when I look at the work they've done in the South Bend, Michawaca area, and even here in downtown St. Joe, is not only above board, it, it fits into the community, and they go the extra distance to make it look special, make it look right, and it would be something we'd all be proud of. I think it's incredible that we would even not consider this. From what I understand, they made a concession in their underground parking to handle the parking spaces from the lot you planned to sell them. And, and that should be the accountability they have for that. I think if you think about the, the people in our community, and I'll give you one last, one last anecdote. After 41 years at Whirlpool, I became very heavily involved in the community. I lead the St. Joe Public School Foundation. I lead the Shadowland Ballroom in the center and the fountain out there. And I'm a member of the, of the operating team at Harbor Shores. And you wonder why a guy that spent 41 years would spend all this time doing important things for the community. I can tell you, when I interviewed candidates throughout my career that wanted to come to work for Whirlpool, the first thing they asked me about was schools. Are the schools good? Are my kids going to get a good education here? The second thing they asked about was doctors. And the last thing they asked about, and they did it often, was, what's there to do in this community? How do we, how do we have fun? How do we go to great restaurants? How do we have theater and different things to do? So I'll leave it at that. I fully, 100% support this project, the sale of this land, and hope you all do as well.
Thank you very much. Other public comment?
Good evening. Nathaniel Bishop. I'm the General Manager at Rybells, 518 Broad Street. I'm here to speak from the perspective of someone who runs and operates a business downtown. I fully support this project. I think it's a vital step toward building a more vibrant and sustainable year-round community, year-round being the, the key for me. I've been at Rybells for almost 15 years now, pre-COVID, post-COVID. The winter and spring are brutal for business. And I'm sure every business in the downtown area would echo that same sentiment. I will say, this project is going to block a little bit of our view from the rooftop, but that's no different than the trees. But that's a topic for a different day. I have no doubt that Rybells will benefit from this project as well as every other business downtown. I want to commend the city's commitment to responsible planning, and I think this project will serve as a cornerstone for continued progress and long-term success. I do know that there's going to be some challenges with a project of this size. My hope is that everyone can work together to make this happen. Concessions might need to be made on both sides, but I truly believe, if we miss the boat on this opportunity, the downtown area will continue, continue to dwindle, and businesses will continue to suffer. So I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anne Gain,
Hi, my name is Anne Gain, and I live at 200 Sunny Bank in the city of St. Joseph. And I remember that lot when the Y was there. I took swimming lessons there when I was five. And so I have been a longtime member of this community. I've supported it. I sell this community now, and I take great pride in doing that. I think this project is a win-win. Change is always hard, but I think this community, we need to embrace it. We don't need to push people away. I think, as the gentleman who just spoke said, there's compromise. And I think that these developers are willing to compromise on certain things. They are dynamic. They're educated. They're savvy business people, and that's who we need. If we stay stagnant here, our community is just going to go downhill, in my opinion. We're not only supporting housing, which that's my industry, and we definitely need more housing in this area, but we're supporting more businesses. And one of the things I have said to clients throughout the years is, our little place in St. Joe, our special place here, compared to some of the other small-time lake communities, is we are a year-round community. We don't end. We've got events throughout the wintertime, the middle of January, we're hosting events that people love in this community. So yes, business may slow down, but I think this is only going to help add to that business, add to the support, and let our little community on the lake thrive. So I am fully in support.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Williams. I live at 2238 Old Lake Shore Road. I've been a lifelong resident of Bering County and a property tax-paying citizen of the city of St. Joe for 31 years. So I'm fully invested in the city. I'm also a builder and developer myself, not on the scale of the Rynx groups, but I applaud them. This is a very risky project for them, and it makes me feel good that these guys have that much confidence that this project will work, that they're going to invest this kind of money. A lot of my talking points have already been said, but I mean, to me, this seems like a no-brainer. It checks all of the boxes of the master plan that the commission put into place, aside from the housing that is needed. So I'm going to, I'm going to speak to some of the complaints that I've heard. You know, there's a lot of online activity, and I'm just going to speak to the size of the building and the appearance of the building. This is a beautiful building. The gray limestone facade matches everything. There's concerns about the height, and just from people talking, I think there's only four residences that are going to lose their view of this building, and two of them belong to the, to the developers. And I, and I also know there's a, there's a few offices, I think on the south side, that are going to lose a few of their views from their office buildings. But I just want to tell you, I'm here to fully support this project. I believe the last development in the downtown area was in 1988, and I believe that was the Boulevard Hotel. And we live in a city that hasn't had a new development in 38 years. We're doing something wrong. And I hope you guys take all that into consideration. We need this development. It's a beautiful building. And all these restaurants and shops, they, they, they struggle in the wintertime. Now we have 100 more people that are going to be living downtown to shop, to go to restaurants. We've got three or four nice restaurants in town. It'd be nice to have a few more to choose from. So I appreciate you listening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandra Mason. I live at 819 Columbia in St. Joe. I grew up in Fairplain, but one of your former mayors that you like to show the picture of in front of his house on State Street is my great-great uncle. So I have a family history of being in the area for a long time. Our 2020 census shows that there's just under 8,000 people that live in this community. I also know from past work experience that the breakdown of your general fund tends to be about 80% residential property tax support and 20% business tax support. I think we're still somewhere with maybe 85. I don't know. Last time I checked, we were about 8515. So I, I think that the residents of this community should also have a little bit of the thought process as this decision is made about parking. How does the sale of a public parking lot benefit the residents of your city? How does it improve the quality of life for all residents of your city? We were recently told by this commission that the downtown parking situation was so dire that residents and taxpayers should pay to park here. There are no guarantees in the sales agreement that I have seen. I know Attorney Schmidt is very good at drawing up the legal stuff, but how exactly will those 57 spots be monitored? How exactly do you know that the citizens that live in this town that want to come down and partake of what's downtown will still have someplace to park? The city commission has an ethics and conflict of interest policy, and number three says that you will act in the public interest. And I hope that you will act in the interest of all the public. I'm asking you how the proposed development, which, by the way, I hadn't seen anything of, but it's, it's excellent. I mean, it's an excellent development. How, I'm asking you how the proposed development and the sale of public land benefits the citizens of the city. According to Mr. Hahn, who is quoted in today's newspaper, and again, who spoke this evening, there will be no benefit for residents because, and I quote, "If these new housing units don't become available," Hahn said, "the market pressures from simple supply and demand for housing will drive prices up." Well, I own a house in the city. I'm, I'm okay with making money when I sell it. I'm okay with housing prices not flatlining. So-
If you could wrap your comments up, please.
Okay. All right. We've, we've heard from numerous businesses in the community that this will help business, and nobody wants to have a vacant downtown. It serves nobody's interest for the downtown to be vacant. But I simply ask that you consider, I mean, is that what you all were elected to do, to take care of the businesses? And what about the residents? So I ask, as you are making this decision about the parking, not the development, looks like a very nice development, that you consider the impact on the residents and how this is going to affect parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got here a little late. I'm sorry if I may have gone, maybe going over some things that people have said, but I apologize. My name is Beth Fanning, 2424 Shoreham Highlands in St. Joe. I think this is a great building. I, I love it. Unfortunately, it does not fall from the sky. It just doesn't appear. There is going to be quite a bit of excavation. Trucks, literally thousands of trucks of sand are going to have to be hauled out, more stuff hauled in, which is all fine. That's what's needed for a building. But I wanted to know how the businesses are going to be impacted on side streets. You're going to probably have to close down parts of Pleasant and Broad and Lakeview. And that, or Lake Boulevard, that borders the park. If you're having construction in that area for over a year with resultant sand and sound and whatever, that's what it takes to build a building. That's okay. But are you going to have to move all of those events? What happens to antiques on the bluff? What happens to crassel? If I were a vendor, I wouldn't want to be showing stuff up there during that, part of that construction process. Again, I think it's a good project, but it's going to cause 100 parking spaces to be closed for the duration of that. And there's going to be a perimeter fence put around. Your pedestrians are going to be routed different directions. It's all fine, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that there is going to be a lot of upheaval. And what can the city do to help those businesses that are going to be affected by sand blowing around, trucks, cranes, cement trucks, all of that noise? It's good. It's what builds a building, but it doesn't exactly create an ambiance for a while. But it may be longer than some of the businesses are willing to put up with, but they can speak to that themselves. You know, they know what they need in that. But, um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Carl Meyer, one of the owners of the 505 properties at 505 Pleasant Street. It is located right here, right across the street from the proposed building. We have over 100 people working in that building. All 100 of them are in support of this building. How does it affect us? Yes, we're going to lose some views. We're going to have some construction. But we think it's such a good idea for the city, we're all for. I will say, there was a man up here as far as handicap parking, just to let you know. We do have handicap parking on the north side of our building and on the south side, just a little extra block. Glad to have you over there with handicap parking. Two, I guess your choice is pretty easy here, as I see it. What I hear tonight is that you could go back to the old school, past commissioners. This city was known for no development, none at all. Or you can be in the future and say, yes, we're open for these ideas. Yes, we want this within our city. We want this additional revenue and keep it coming. That's where the 505 building is for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chris Cook. I'm a resident at 404 Dune Ridge South. I'm also the managing director and president of Harbor Shores. I also learned how to swim at the Old Y and played basketball there for years, so I was sad to see that come down. The city's downtown Vision Master Plan encourages this site to be developed with a priority on residential and mixed use to help contribute to the character and vitality of the downtown. As was also mentioned, a housing market analysis also identified a need for 900 more housing units in the city over the next five years. Harbor Shores has plans to introduce over 200 new residential and mixed-use units. We cannot do 900 units by ourselves. We need others to be willing to invest in our city to meet this need. We have an opportunity on this site to work with a great partner in the Rynx Group. I expect that any concerns related to the details of the development can be addressed during the engineering and architectural work while working with city staff and the residents. Therefore, I support the city moving ahead with the sale of this property as a necessary and important first step in developing the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name's Tom Galick. I'm a resident of the city of St. Joseph for the last 13 years. I'm also the chair of the Downtown Development Authority Board. I, like many individuals here this evening, I fully support this project personally, and I also want to note that the Downtown Development Authority Board voted unanimously to support this project. Like, like many people, I've heard a lot of concerns about, well, this project is going to create, you know, us to lose our, our small-town feel. So it made me think about changes that have occurred in this community prior to my coming here and, and after doing so. So things like, we don't have an amusement park on the beach anymore. The Whitcomb isn't a hotel anymore. The Whirlpool Compass Fountain sits where a factory used to be. I don't know if anybody, everybody knows that, but it was a factory once upon a time on that site. No longer. And now we have a pizza parlor in our train station. So the point here I'm trying to make, to make is that change is inevitable. These things are going to happen. And frankly, I think it's a real testament to our community, the quality of our community and the desirability of our community, that these gentlemen, their bankers, their investors, are willing to spend $55 million in our community. I'm, frankly, I'm kind of blown away by that, by that number, but that's what it takes to do what these guys are describing. And I'd hope that this board will support that, and maybe more importantly, that the people of this community support this activity when these guys launch this project, because I think it's going to be a game changer for the city of St. Joseph. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any other public comment?
Anne Barnes, 68 Market Street, as a resident. I've lived here since 1986. I've shared this concern with the planning commission, and I've brought this up before, that the stability of the, the land, the typography, when the train goes by, things shake above and below. There are underground springs in some of the properties above the bluff. So you need to keep this in mind. You're going to do an underground garage, and then you're going to have this big building on top. How stable is our bluff, our precious bluff? I also have a question. The master plan that you keep, that we talk about, we hear about, includes those, those plots are to be three- and four-story buildings. What happened in that, that change? Why are we deviating? And is, that, that's a big concern. It is a beautiful building. They've taken a lot of consideration into it. I'm partial to Indiana limestone as being a Hoosier. So, and I trust that you will keep it looking good and not modern. That is, that is a great thing. But again, I'd hate for something to be, to happen to our bluff. I remember when the Boulevard was first being built, that, and it's a much smaller building. They have a basement. They don't have an underground garage, but the foundation collapsed, the east end, I think, wall. So they had to do a little redo there. So please keep all this in mind. Otherwise, we're in big trouble.
Thank you.
I'll just jump in to add that the purchase agreement does require all of the appropriate engineering due diligence, geotechnical surveys, soil borings, all of the things that Anne has raised before. We'll make sure that all of that due diligence is completed.
Thank you. Other public comment? All right, seeing none, we have a motion. We have a second. We need to call the roll. Abby.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Vinkley?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We will move along then to- Yeah, I know. Love that. We'll just, we'll wait a minute just for people to clear out so we can move on to the next item. They were.
Archive Lounge?
Yes.
Got it.
All right. Are you ready for us, Kelly?
We are on to a new business, DDA liquor license application, the Archive Lounge LLC.
Okay, so as you may recall, the DDA has been approached by businesses that were interested in the opportunity to take advantage of the DDA liquor license program. This allows businesses the opportunity to purchase an on-premise liquor license at a lower cost than the traditional population-based ones. And they also cannot be sold or transferred to another property, so they are tied to that property. The development area was approved by the commission on the July 28 meeting, and I've received interest from two businesses wanting to take advantage of the program. So I'm going to bring them both to you. I'm going to go through the whole thing with one, and then we'll go to the second one. The first, the first business is the Archive Lounge OLC, located at the Library Hotel at 500 Main Street. They're requesting approval to move forward with their application to the MLCC for a Class C liquor license, and they have satisfied the requirements of the district license, which was part of you approving the district, that those requirements are at least $75,000 expended for new construction or the rehabilitation or restoration of the building over the preceding five years, or a commitment for capital investment of at least $75,000 in the building before the license is issued. They must be engaged in activities related to dining, entertainment, or recreation, and the business must be open to the general public and have a seating capacity of not less than 25 persons. So I am asking for approval of the resolution allowing the Archive Lounge's request to move forward with their Class C liquor license application to the MLCC.
Okay, thank you. Very straightforward. Questions from the commission?
Yeah, I know, I know there's some pretty strong objection to, to this liquor license, particularly from Seron Lutheran Church. I know that when, when it was originally going to be a Class C license, they had actually filed an objection that was later, that was later withdrawn. We, I don't want to be someone who is stamping down, you know, saying no to new business, but I do think that we need to really consider some of the neighbor relations for that. So like I said, I'm aware of extremely strong opposition from Saran Lutheran Church. Has there been any contact with the, the individuals who own the Wallace House behind them as well? Are they here?
I don't know. Do you want? The owners are here.
Yeah.
I'll let them.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello. Jack, can I, the Wallace House, is that the one adjacent to it?
The little one, yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to Jeff quite a few times about what we're doing and, and the project and he has no problem with it. He's actually for it from everything we've talked about.
Yeah. And so just, I'm, I'm sure you've seen from, and spoken with Saran Lutheran Church just about some of their concerns. How would you, how would you address that to us on the commission?
Well, I believe this meeting also right now is just for the approval. This still has to go through the Michigan State approval process. So they will have another opportunity to agree or disagree with the license. I believe this is just a, you guys will give us the go ahead to go ahead with the, the approval of the Michigan State license. So.
Will you be open on Sundays?
Yes.
Okay.
Minimum hours. So probably around three o'clock we open up, three o'clock till, well, nine. The entire bar itself is small, 50 people. It'll be opened up from four o'clock till 9:30 max, 10 latest if everybody's clearing out there. Because we have a hotel upstairs. It's not a, it's not a bar bar. It's not a sports bar. It's not a place where you go to watch a game. You go there, have a cocktail, you go out to dinner and that's it. If you want to come back for a nightcap to go upstairs, you can. This is not a, a rager, by any stretch. It's just not. It's a small little boutique hotel with a little speakeasy bar in the basement that's going to be just nice and quiet.
I think the request meets the criteria, you know, step before it's got, you know, some other steps it sounds like to work through, you know, for its approval process. And I mean, I, understanding what you guys have invested into, you know, rehabbing a historic building into something new, something that appreciates, you know, the historical aspect of it and serves a purpose today, trying to draw people in. Appreciate what you guys are trying to do. You know, I move to approve the resolution approving the Archive Lounge LLC's request for a Class C liquor license in the DDA development area.
I support. Any public comment on the matter? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Fran Bolson and I'm representing the church council for Saran Lutheran Church. So I just wanted, I do have some questions that I want to reiterate the process that we had gone through with the Michigan Liquor Commission. And so we had received the notice of, of the application, the original application. I guess that's some of my questions as well as how this differs from the application that the owners had backed down from. So we had responded. We had a council meeting. We recorded our objections. We, you know, again, I do also want to mention that we're in support of this project. We think it would be exciting to have the bed and breakfast. However, we did start the process and we had to reschedule. We got our new dates, a reschedule, and then heard that the request was withdrawn. So my question is, how does this differ from the original request for license that we had seen? And then we also do want to make sure that this is going through the process through the Michigan Liquor Commission as we are within the 500 feet. I mean, we're certainly, we're next door. And again, Saran has been an active member contributing contributor to this community for 150 years. So I guess if, does anyone know how this differs from the original request? Can I ask that question?
Do you know, Kelly? Kelly can answer that.
So it's still going to go through, what, what I'm asking for approval tonight is the opportunity for them to reapproach the MLCC for an application. This is a, these liquor licenses are based within the downtown development district. They're at a lower cost, but they have to stay with the, the location. So if for some reason they go out of business or decide not to do this anymore, that license in essence, I, I will say goes away. It can't be sold on the market like traditional ones. It just takes them out of the population based licenses like all the traditional ones. So they still will, you'll still have the opportunity. I'm sure you're going to hear from the MLCC again. It's the same process for the most part. It's just a little bit different opportunity for them. We can offer more licenses within the district based on the investment that the city has done. Does that make sense? Did I explain? Okay. So yeah, you'll, they'll still, what, what they're going to approve tonight, if you so choose, is a resolution that the, the owners will take to the MLCC and start the process for the license.
Yes, one other question is the reason for the upping the capacity? I mean, it's not a large bed and breakfast. Why does it go to, I guess the capacity before was below, was it below 25 people, the type of?
I'm not sure.
Actually, we, we lowered it. We lowered the capacity only because of,
Well, the number, how many rooms are you?
It's six rooms, but in order, do I need to speak?
Whatever, whatever you're comfortable with.
In order to make certain regulations for the building, so we didn't have to put elevators in it and everything else, keep it original. We lowered the capacity. I mean, it could have been bigger. So it, it shrank. And then there's a whole different scenario of why we're going this route versus the other route when we had something lined up. It wasn't us. It was a problem with the other Class C license. So when that fell through, that's when we decided to do this.
I'll just jump in to say, I, I think Tess's point was a good one. As it goes through the process and goes back to MLCC who has the final say, I'm sure they will look for support from neighbors or at least conversations with neighbors. And so I appreciate this, but I think that will certainly need to happen in a more robust way as it moves from the city to the MLCC who's really the final approver.
Procedurally, what we are doing is allowing them to apply through the DDA liquor license program that we applied. There is still reviews that your input and review that gets taken care of separately. That's not what we're deciding. We're just going to stay low. This is a procedural application thing.
Correct.
And Fran, I think too, as, and, and I might be wrong, but if there are additional changes in the intensity of use of, you know, capacity and everything like that, that will come back again, correct? So.
We'd have to come in front of you guys and also the state of Michigan, not. Yeah, I mean, I'm getting a class for, I'm getting a license for exactly what we're doing. Again, if I decide to change the whole building into a bar, that would be a whole different scenario.
Thank you. Did I see another public comment? I think I did.
Anne Barnes, Sixweight Market Street. The buffer zone. I did not learn, we did not learn about this lounge until we saw the agenda. And we're at the end, you know, Market Street, we, across the street from Saran, that back entrance. So this is a big surprise and it's, it's not a very welcome one. And it's a concerning one since it's open to the public and people, as he said, will come in, get a drink and then go out to have dinner. And then it's so, it's, it's right up to the church. I mean, there's this little parking lot and then there's this facility and the, the walkway that goes down. So that is a big concern. If there are church activities coming up, regardless. When you have vacation Bible school, when you have other things, it's, that raises a red flag. But also I live down there and I've seen what can go up and down that alley and that is a tight area. And one of the, the exits is out onto the main street, going down the alley, coming down our alley. There's the parking lot. There's the MGM apartments. It just concerns me. I haven't had time to totally process it because again, I didn't find out about it. There was no notice sent out to anybody in the neighborhood. So as a mom, she's gone, a grandmother and a neighbor and watching people walking the door, just, it's a big concern to have a speakeasy. I've seen it where it works in other communities, but not in that location. Not in that tight environment, not next to a church. So thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Michael Ginola, business owner, property owner here in City St. Joe. As the previous big production that was going on about the marquee, about trying to bring younger communities, younger residents and everything, what are they supposed to do in downtown? We're limited on our restaurants and everything else to do. So with what these folks are trying to do, they, they have their, their six rooms that they're putting in there, but they're also having that for potentially other people to stop in and have a cocktail, whether it's before or after dinner. Well, they want it for the rest of the community use. And I think it would be a great spot for, for people to go in and stop, not just for people who are staying at that, that boutique. We're limited in spots that we're, we're able to go to. We don't have, whether you talk to the, the old bars, the old establishments, whether it's czars or different spots that we can go to downtown. There's things that people want to go to. A speakeasy isn't a nightclub. This is something that they want to go to, hang out, just have a quiet drink. It's not going to really affect the church. I think this would be a great thing to have. The boutique is already going to take care of itself. I think the, the speakeasy, that should just, would bring a lot for both the, the marquee, the, the, the big development that's happening as well as what's going on downtown. So I think this thing is just a no brainer to happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We need to call the roll.
Commissioner Ory?
No.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Serola?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And then you have a second one that you're presenting on right now as well. It is the DDA liquor license application for the St. Joseph Wine Shop.
Do you want me to go through everything again or?
I don't think so. I think you just get to the.
Along the same premises as the previous one. I was approached by the St. Joseph Wine Shop located inside the market at 301 Main Street, units five and six. They're looking to pivot their operation to a wine bar that offers wines by the glass bottle and tasting as well as keeping their retail operation. So again, I'm asking for the approval of our resolution allowing the St. Joseph Wine Shop's request to move forward with their Class C liquor license application with the MLCC.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve a resolution in support of St. Joseph Wine Shop's request for a Class C liquor license in the DDA development area.
Support. Any public comment on this matter? All right, Abby call the roll.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Serola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we are on to text amendment section 9.8.2 MSOD, Main Street Overlay District, District Boundaries and Descriptions, Graham Kuchek.
Hi, during the August 7th meeting of the planning commission, they conducted a public hearing to amend the zoning ordinance in article or in section 9.8.2, which is the Main Street Overlay District. This area is between Broad Street and Jones and it's only for properties that abut the, abut Main Street. When that was created in 2021, the properties located in the D downtown district along with one block consisting of six parcels in the R1E district and a PUD were exempted from being within that, that district, being able to add additional dwelling units on the ground floor. Most of those other properties are in the C or the COA district. The property, the applicant purchased a property in the R1A, R1E district, which has a, used to have an office on the ground floor and has had difficulty renting it as an office space, does not want to convert it to a single family dwelling. It's better set up to do a two unit. There is an existing dwelling unit on the second and third floors. They're requesting that the ordinance or the text, the zoning ordinance be amended to eliminate the word R1 from it. And so it would be allowed to be converted into a two unit. It would also allow the other homes on the, that particular block between Pearl and Park to also do the same thing if they wanted to. You still have to comply. There's certain conditions. You have to meet minimum dwelling size, number of parking spaces. So the other dwellings might be a little more difficult to do. But this building would probably work very well for that to be converted to a second dwelling unit. During the public hearing, one resident did speak who lives within, within that block and he owns two properties and he was supportive of the request. The applicant is here or a representative for the applicant is here if there's any questions for them.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
No, I think this is a great way to, you know, we keep hearing about these 900 units of housing that we absolutely need. So even one of them makes a difference. So this seems like a common sense rezoning.
Great. That's the pleasure of the commission.
I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend Article 9, Special District, Section 9.8, Section 9.8.2 to include properties located within the R-1 Single Family Residence District in the Overlay District of the Michigan, based on the factors set forth under Section 22.3 of the zoning ordinance.
Support. Any public comment? Abby call the roll.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Serola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And I think you're up here for a little bit. So next item is public hearing. Area generally located southerly of the CSX Railroad property and west of M63 along Upton and Whitlam Drives consisting of three properties. Harbor Shores Community Redevelopment LLC planned unit, unit development with waivers. We're opening a public hearing. So that is at 7:28 PM.
So the planning commission conducted a public hearing during, during their August 7th meeting and recommended approval of seven, by a vote of seven to zero of the proposed planned unit development on an approximate 19 acre site consisting of three parcels. Part of one parcel is located in the water and it would be for a 77 boat slip marina. The applicant is proposing 105 dwelling units on six buildable areas, one commercial space and outdoor recreation areas, along with a private road, alleys and surface parking lot for the development. Once they, you'll see in their pre summit or in their applicant or in their drawings that they're going to go over with you. There's some additional land area that is not being developed at this time. They will need to come back for a planned unit development amendment when they get ready to develop those areas. As part of a planned unit development, you are able to ask for waivers. Because there's six different buildable areas, there's a total of 36 waivers being requested. A lot of them are redundant, but we kept them together with each buildable area. So it was clear what was going on. A lot of them is for front building setback. This development's a little different. The same developer and builder who are doing Harbor Village to the east of this property are working on doing this project together. And as we were talking about a site plan and how to lay it out, the developer and builder expressed concern about how Harbor Shore, Harbor Village was developed with the setbacks and then things could encroach into them. In this case, we decided we'd try something different. So basically all the setbacks are zero in many cases. So everything has to be within the envelope and really what's going to control it would be the lot coverage. So in all cases, there is an increase in lot coverage. They did include the alleyway or private driveways leading to all the homes. There'll be no driveways on the streets. It'll be all through the alley similar to what's going on in Harbor, Harbor Village. So the applicant is here. During the public hearing, there were some residents that spoke expressing concern about the density, the height of some of the buildings and that was clarified. There's one building that could be, they're requesting a waiver to 60 feet. And that's for a condo type building loft style structure. The other buildings would be, be 50 feet or lower, probably more in keeping with a three story building. So there's the waivers and then probably one of the, one of the waivers that is included now is typically planned unit developments need to be built out within one year. They're requesting five years for 50% development. And that's kind of in keeping how Harbor Shores has been going. Rather than having them come back every year and conduct a public hearing, asking for an extension. That's something that's been happening on more and more of the PUDs is an extension of time right into the ordinance. So they are here. They have a PowerPoint presentation. If you have any questions for me, I can answer them now too. So.
Okay. Why don't we do the presentation and then we'll take questions after that?
Okay, you can go to the next slide. Yes, that one. Thank you. So again, Chris Cook here representing Harbor Shores. I also have with me Brad Rotchafer, who's our builder. He will talk to you in a bit about some of the inspiration and architectural details. And Kathy Burzak from Abin Marsh is also here. In case there's questions I can't answer, she did a lot of the work on this. So just a little bit of introduction of the, some of the history of the Harbor Shores project. When Whirlpool Corporation initially developed Harbor Shores nearly 20 years ago, it was to be a catalyst for economic development, recreation and tourism. Harbor Shores has developed over 250 high quality residential units over the past 15 years. We have a track record of doing what we say we're going to do, and we have continually, continually learned and improved with time, as evidenced by the change in this particular submittal. Uh, we have successfully completed town home, marina, hotel and apartment projects and look forward to making this project the crown jewel of Harbor Shores. A little bit of a site plan overview, if you could go to the next one. So just to give you some context again, this is south of the railroad tracks and those are kind of at the top of the screen. And then Whitwam Drive cuts through the upper third and north of that between Whitwam and the tracks is what we call parcel one. And our request today is to put pickleball courts and parking on that particular site. In the future, we intend to do some more housing, but we're not ready to bring that forward yet. South of Whitwam, between it and the river are, are development areas for mostly town home product at this time. There would be some condo, um, and that was referenced in Kristen's remarks about a request to go from 50 to 60 feet for that in case we need it. We don't know that we do, but we'd like to have that flexibility depending on demand. And note that that is the closest spot that you can get to, because it's in area P1G. That's at the area closest to the High Bank where M63 runs through. So you will hardly see it peak over the top there. And it's shorter than the end. The proposed future development then to the west half of the site, I'll call it a west third of the site is all, is just what it says. That is a future development. Um, we expect that to be some of our hospitality. Brad will show you some concepts for that, but we are again, not quite there today. West of Upton Drive is the former Whirlpool property, which we have now acquired. And again, we're not ready to bring forth plans for that. And then south of the site is where the marina is where we have 77 slips. That just kind of orients you a little bit. We've worked with the staff to take a different approach again here, um, that allows us to define the buildable areas with those minimal setbacks and allows city staff flexibility and implementation. Uh, the plan requires us to keep all of the buildings within that defined area or those defined areas, including the HVAC units, any bay windows, stairs, porches, decks, overhangs, the garbage cans, all that stuff has to fit within there. So each time we want to have an eve that goes within what you might consider a normal setback, we don't have to come and ask for a change. It also allows us flexibility in the type of unit depending upon how demand progresses over time. The protection for the city is that all the codes must still be followed, including the lot coverage area, um, before we can proceed with any construction. Again, some of you may have concerns about what will go into those buildable areas because we're not showing you much on this plan. And that's where Brad will go into some of those details in a minute. It's former industrial property that we really don't think have any neighbors that are negatively impacted here. Um, again, with the site plan, we have, uh, plans for a marina with 77 slips, 105 dwelling units, workforce housing or market rate housing similar to what the ranks group was proposing, uh, commercial space, outdoor recreational areas and ample parking. The area is appropriately zoned as waterfront mixed use, which contemplates exactly what we're proposing. This is phase one of $150 million development, which if those ranks numbers are true, and I believe they are, would translate into $15 million in consumer spending per year. A few of the details of the plan are that the street, um, will be private and it kind of goes in a U shape, um, south of Whitwam Drive there. Um, it will be a low volume road, which is conducive to the parallel and perpendicular parking that we've proposed. We've asked for three waivers relative to the, um, street design that we think are very appropriate for this location. A 60 foot right away allows us still to fit all of our utilities in there, but creates this sort of neighborhood feel where you're close to the street and sidewalk. We also have an 80 foot right away where we can fit the perpendicular parking right close to the marina there and get more people close to the water, close to our amenities and, uh, close to boats. Um, and then the, the, there's one other kind of oddity in the ordinance that lists a maximum number of lots that may access multiple entrances. It seems like the more entrances you have, the more lots you could have. So we're asking for a waiver on that as well. That buildable area requirement that was mentioned is a 50% maximum. We're providing lots of open space and providing only 32% coverage over the entirety of the site. Each individual area has, uh, more than 50% those buildable areas with a letter P1 letter. But we have made up for that with open space elsewhere. We've been sensitive to good asset management practices and have limited access to three locations along Whitwam Drive, um, with emergency access at three other locations. And we've also provided lots of facilities to make this neighborhood very walkable. As Kristen mentioned, we do request more than two years to complete 50% of the proposed units. It will take us several months just to get to where we can start vertical construction. We have to go through permitting and, um, bidding and getting the construction of infrastructure done. So we expect that our building will, uh, run through 2033 or 2034. So we've asked for that five years to be 50% complete. We certainly hope that we're quicker, but that gives us the flexibility that we need. Again, was mentioned the 36 waivers, um, which may seem like a daunting number. Um, however, those waivers again are repeated in each of those buildable areas. So it's really the same variance six times. Um, and it really just relates to those setbacks and lot coverage that we've talked about. We've addressed the public and, uh, planning commission comments, um, at the last meeting and the planning commission recommended approval of seven to zero. And so we ask that you do the same. Uh, before you do that though, I'd like to have Brad spend a few minutes again, showing you some of the inspiration and actual detail. So you can get a sense of what we're talking about here.
Can we go to the next slide? Okay. My name is Brad Rotchafer. Um, I am the president of Mosaic Properties and Homes. And I was tasked with first designing it with a whole team of people. Um, it involved really three solid weeks where we gather architects and other designers and focus on one project. And we hit that consecutively for three weeks. It's called a charrette. It's pretty common in these communities. And so, um, we worked with a real talented group of people. Uh, we had four tenants or goals as we kind of worked through the design process. One was, um, we, we want to design it in traditional neighborhood design patterns, which will become more obvious as we work through it. Um, I'll explain that a little bit more. Uh, we wanted to activate the waterfront. I brought a pointer last time I didn't have one. So, uh, you know, obviously we have this wonderful asset here, right? Of, um, Lake Michigan not far away, and it really is enjoyed by not only the surrounding community, but boaters and, uh, the view from, uh, St. Joe will be, uh, visible too. So, um, one of our goals is really to, that's kind of our public realm and we'll talk, I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then, um, the key to having amenities kind of scattered throughout the development. Um, I'll go through that a little bit and why that's important. Uh, important from, from creating a walkable neighborhood, uh, because you want to give people, um, reasons to walk. Um, so I'll, I'll point out some of the, um, techniques that we use and other developers have used, um, to do that. And then we wanted to establish a high level of architectural standards, which, um, we will review toward the latter part of the presentation. So next slide please. Okay. Um, so there's three, um, communities, uh, that, um, we focused on as far as inspiration. They're all located within seven miles of each other, panhandle of Florida. Some of you might be familiar with Seaside. Um, Seaside was where the Truman Show was shot, if you don't know, uh, that, but, um, you'll see a lot of Seaside shirts around. It's a pretty popular community. Um, ironically, it was developed by a group of architect that were young at the time. It was in 1980, Andre Stowani and his wife. And it was a weird part of the area that wasn't very well developed. They had no codes. So they could actually revert back to 1920 codes, which is what they wanted to do and create a walkable neighborhood. You know, kind of make the car the enemy a little bit and the pedestrian the king. And so, um, you'll see, uh, and they brought together a star studded architectural team too. Um, so I'll, I'll talk about Seaside the most probably, and then I'll hit on Rosemary Beach, which came later, and then Alice Beach, which, which is the, which is the furthest. So next slide please. So Seaside, uh, is a picturesque, uh, beach town on the golf course. It's known for its iconic architecture, walkability and community design. It was established in the 1980s early. It featured, um, architectural pavilions. You can kind of see one right here, which kind of leads you right to the, to the, uh, water. And there are a number of them and they're pretty spectacular. Here's another one right here. Uh, they had this iconic little post office and, um, I, you know, we could spend all day on it. The core of it is right here. It's kind of the, the, um, commercial and they have, there's an amphitheater there and a lot of shops and it kind of, so it, it really was one of the first projects that became well known that used principles that we used in the 1920s and 30s. And some of them are here too, in St. Joe, right? Where you had front porches, people could walk to the beach, they could walk to the amenities downtown. The car wasn't such a, a thing. And so, uh, they became very well known and it really changed the dynamics for me personally and other town builders. Um, and a number of us were trained there. They had a Seaside Institute. It was very good. It was taught by Andre Stowani, who was the original architect here. And so, um, yeah, so that's kind of how I got my start. Um, next slide please. So Rosemary Beach is actually designed by the same, all of these are actually signed by, designed by Andre Stowani. This is a little larger. Seaside was 80 acres. This is 107. Um, similar to our community where we're, we're hoping to do a hotel. This is a hotel right here that overruns a green and, um, you can see the backside of this. The architecture is quite spectacular. Um, and it was a very popular community, very high demand and was reported as one of the most profitable communities in, in Florida. And it really moved, again, it moved people away from the gated communities that were being built before this to more of a public realm where people could enjoy the commercial zones and be, you know, actually just visit. So, um, next one, Alice Beach. Alice Beach, uh, is characterized, it's all white. Um, I haven't been to it yet, but people say you have to wear your sunglasses because it's so bright. Um, but it is a pretty exclusive community, uh, with high end amenities. Uh, it's a bigger, they kept getting bigger. Uh, this one's 158 acres. It was started in 2004. It's substantially complete, but I think there's a few lots kind of hanging around there. Um, and so what we admired about these communities is that they were all built in a timeless manner. Um, you know, Seaside's going on 40, I don't know, is it 40 years? Yeah, 45 years and still a beautiful community. The architecture hasn't aged. Um, they initially sold their cottages for 150,000. They're being torn down, uh, and sold for $3 million and people are putting $10 million, whether you like that or not. That's what's happening there. Um, so it's still highly in demand, um, and really just used principles and great architecture that we had back in the 1920s. So, next slide please. So the first thing I, after that, I want to talk about is how we, our plan is to activate the waterfront. Um, as you can see, um, our plan is to have a, a swimming pool, uh, which would be private to the association, may have some memberships, but, uh, and there's a restaurant, a public restaurant right here is our plan. It's not on this current, you're not voting on this tonight. This is kind of a-
Future.
Yeah, future idea. Uh, our idea is to have a little ice cream shop here. There's an access point from the bike path. So there'll be a bike path that's connected, interconnected with the other bike paths in the community. Uh, this is a handicap accessible ramp. And so if you wanted to stop here and get ice cream or stop in the restaurant bar, the, uh, the idea here is that we'll actually have nano walls here. It can open up to an open air concept, but then closed off in the winter and still be maintained as a full-time restaurant bar. There's paddlers park is right here. Uh, that will be an area for kayak launch and , uh, we're, we're going to help build that out.
Wait, will you show me where that is again?
Right here.
Okay.
Yep. So, um, okay, next slide please. Uh, here's kind of a rendering of the waterfront restaurant. You can see there's two entrances to the, to the pools. They're, they're pretty, um, luxury level pools. Next slide. And so obviously we don't have the pools designed, but here's kind of some inspiration photos, maybe what the pool house might look like. There's a family pool, uh, and an adult pool here and would have access to the, to the bar restaurants. Next slide. Uh, as I said earlier, the importance of these amenities at a resort and really any community, we, we put a lot of these in our, uh, urban communities too, is have these, these, we kind of take a resort mentality. Um, but, um, some of these activities will be accessible to the public. We, we, we think the, maybe toward the front off the bike path, we might have some, some games and for people that are just hanging out, uh, waiting to get into the restaurant or whatever. Um, next slide. And we'll have a number of fire pits, um, maybe fountains, um, but those will be kind of scattered through the development. And the idea of that is that you have a place to walk to. You know, the whole idea is to get people out and meeting together. And so we'll probably have three or four different areas and I'll show you, um, uh, maybe on the site plan where we can, we'll, we'll put some of those. Next slide. And we've done dog parks and they're very popular. And, um, I don't know if this will be part of the first phase, but people like to travel with their dogs and, you know, dogs have become more, more and more, um, important to families as in the last years that I've noticed. Next slide. So we have a diverse housing type. This is where I'll get into the architectural side. And again, our goal is to establish a high standard of, uh, housing. Um, so we're going to have this hospitality section, which we're still designing. I'm going to show some conceptual ideas and where that's located and town homes, courtyards, which are kind of empty nester, main floor living focused and a loft building, uh, and some apartments. Next slide. So, uh, so it's kind of hard. I probably shouldn't, but this is a section kind of to the far west. And, uh, we designed the hotel to be pretty small, kind of more of a bed and breakfast style. There's nine rooms. It'll be a spa potentially. That's kind of located right here. And you'll see there's a, like a tower right here. So when you drive in the neighborhood, it's called a deflecting, uh, vista. You'll see this tower and you'll see it when you come this way. You'll see it from the, from the boaters and you'll see it from, uh, St. Joe. Next slide. Here's kind of a, a rendering of what we're proposing. Next slide. And these are the villas. So the villas kind of like are these buildings and they're actually, uh, two units on- And they're actually two units on top of each other. And this, these are called the honeymoon suites. These are a little smaller, but right on the water. Next slide. So these are a rendering of what that might look like. Next slide. And here's the honeymoon cottages. Next slide. So our townhouses, which make up quite a bit of the community, really are in this area here and here. And they're kind of scattered in here a little bit. Next slide. So this is one of our buildings that we've designed. It's on a corner, so it's, you know, it's important that the architecture reads well on all sides. So we're creating bay windows. And this upper area will be kind of cool, because I think you'll see the water from there. Next slide. Our courtyard homes, our empty nester homes, they'll all have some type of courtyard, either off, which will be off the living space. In this case, it's off the living space and the master bedroom. And I think we have 30 of these, I'm not sure. But a different style, there's a couple of different styles of these. Next slide. The loft building, so this loft we're building in Ada, hopefully soon. We're doing a development in downtown Ada, Michigan. This one, the parking's down below. We don't have any parking. We have sufficient parking back here. But the loft is currently located here. We may switch it here, we're not sure. That's why we're asking for the flexibility of the plan. But this tour, this tour again, you'll kind of see, we think you'll see it here as you kind of come here, and you'll see it here. And it'll be kind of a landmark piece, like we kind of did right here also in Ada. Next slide. So we have a few, I think we're thinking about 10 apartments in the first phase. Could be worker housing, could be people that are going to work at the restaurant. It'll be kind of priced to try to meet that market. But it's not a lot, but we thought it would show. This is a project in Atlanta called Trilith. And these are worker housing apartments that turned out pretty nice. Next slide. Okay, so that's it. So our goal, obviously, is to create really a landmark community that's built to last. And that's really our goal. We're committed to it. I hope you can see that in the presentation. Thank you, and I'm here for any questions you have.
Thank you for all that. That was very informative. Any questions from the commission?
Yeah, I have a few, but it's a beautiful, beautiful design. But I do have a few questions, and I think some of them came up with the planning commission. I know it's going to be a place where, you know, you don't want to have cars, so you want probably people to be able to walk to downtown. And I know somebody talked to you about going up where that path is right now to M63 to walk that way. And I know it's a steep slope. So is there something that you're going to do as far as a walkway to get up there and over?
We certainly hope so. But at this point, we cannot commit to that, because that requires work with MDOT. It's a limited-access freeway. And so we do intend to work with them to try to see if we can get a stairway or something to get up there. In the absence of that, it isn't a long walk to go under the bridge and up the ramp to get to downtown. So worst case is not a bad case. But we would like to be able to get something where you can get right there. We also intend to connect our pathway on this parcel, too, I still call it, with the Harbor Village site. So we'd have to go under the bridge and work with MDOT on that as well.
And that would be a public, like bike path?
100% public. And if you recall, required as part of the whole Gene Clock Park mitigation plan.
Thank you.
Chris, there was some discussion. I know we're going to have the kayak launch, Paddler's Park. There was some discussion about possibly a jet ski ramp in there, something along those lines. Is that still part of the project?
We have plans at Paddler Park for kayak launch. And that would be universally accessible kayak launch. But then it was also desired of the Parks Board to have a, I'll call it land-based launch. And whether that be for kayaks or jet skis, would certainly be allowed to go in there. And we intend to accommodate those sort of uses. It would be a city park still. It won't be our park, so it'll be whatever you all want, we're going to do.
It looked like it was really close to where the boat slips are going to be. So is there a way to still get in without having to be around all the boat slips with the kayaks?
Yes. If we could bring the site plan up, I might be able to show that more clearly.
And the boutique hotel is in a later phase, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Here, keep going.
Oh, that's fine. So here's our marina. And here's Paddler Park. And here are the kayak and jet ski launches, if you will. We're going to have some grab-and-go slips from right here. There'll be transients. But purposely taking those and keeping those uses separate. And then this pier actually comes out farther. So you'll be protected as you come in here from, you won't have to go through all of this marina stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions? No. We're still in public here, so we will take any public comments on the matter. Come on up. And because it's a public hearing, it's even more important to get your name and address on the record, too.
Joyce Chilio, 275 Bridgeway. So with this area, I am concerned, because Harbor Village, as nice as it is, it's very dense. And it's congested, and it's not as pretty as I would have liked to have seen it, because there's just inundated with buildings. So I was kind of hoping that that area would be less dense. And maybe, I was hoping there would be more public spots, like the pickleball. I think that's all private. All those areas are private, correct?
Not entirely.
Okay. And I'm wondering if those meeting areas that you had talked about, is that public or private? Some of those meeting spots that you had talked about?
If you could address questions here, and then we'll kind of collect them here, and then we'll get it to the applicant.
And those meeting spots that was discussed, I'm wondering if those are public?
Fire pits?
Fire pits, yeah.
You're wondering if that's public?
Public or private.
Okay. Any other questions? That's it? Okay. Do you want to respond to that, Chris? Or... Okay, you want to just hold and see if, any other public comments on this item? Sure.
Lois Goldrick, Bridgeway. I just actually needed to stand up. So are any of these short-term rentals? Are they allowed there? That's one question. And the other question is, is the first slide, that's the topographical, is that available to the public? Is there some way to print that out at home?
What was the question?
The very first slide, and it was in black and white, it was a topographical of the planned, proposed...
Kristin, is this in the packet?
We can access that.
Kristin, is it in the packet? Yeah, so it should be in our agenda packet that's on the website.
Correct. Any other public comment? Okay. Chris, do you have any response to any of these questions? I got them written down if you need them.
I'll find it. Get them.
So the last one was about short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are allowed in this waterfront recreation district. We intend to allow them as well. And not, we haven't determined yet how exactly, how many there would be, nor can we really anticipate that. The price point of these are going to vary again. We're going to have some affordable market rate housing. As you move closer to the water, the price point increases. Those are probably not likely candidates for short-term rentals because of that price point. But that's still TBD. Am I done?
No. I left it on.
The meeting spots, I think, as Brad was trying to address, there'll be a combination of public and private with those. As you get closer to the water, there'll be more public. Certainly, the 40-foot strip will be entirely public. Our restaurant will be public. Some of the gathering spaces will also be available for bags and things like that. We will also have some private spaces. That'll be nooks and crannies, kind of within that pod of housing. And so we'll keep those private. The density, so, and it may be the density that's the issue at Harbor Village, and it may be the hodgepodge-iness, I might call it. And that is why we really like this idea of a, you know, kind of following the architecture of those three developments in Florida that are consistently themed. And so that's our intention with this, is to have a consistent theme that will make it look and feel spacious. We'll have lots of open space for walking, gathering, while still reaching what we think is a marketable demand for that sort of product. We have been at Harbor Village selling those units faster than we can build them. Did I catch all the comments?
I believe so, yes, thank you. Okay, we didn't have any other public comments, so we can close the public hearing. And that is going to be at 8:03. And now I think, Kristin, you need to give a motion.
The next item on the agenda is the draft motion for approving this. Get to that page. Is that on page 180?
Page 279.
279? 279? The motion does include a reference of a condition that final engineering be approved. That's still being worked on. Our ordinance requires final engineering, so we're just doing that as a condition. So no work can take place until engineering has been approved.
Thank you for that clarification. With this, just to reiterate, you know, this is 105, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, 105? 150, thank you. More units, potentially, you know, in addition to another 100. You know, we're really working our way towards that, you know, that big number of how many we need. It doesn't happen overnight. It takes multiple projects, you know, like this. And there's a lot of things in this specific project that we don't know exactly how they're going to look. But this project involves elements of creating a place where people want to go to, you know, and tying that to a public park is nearby, using the waterfront, making a place where people want to go, buy a house, come here to vacation, and stay here. End of your life, right? That's what we want to create. This is in line with that. We will see the specifics as the project itself, you know, gets concrete breakdown of, you know, how many of X, Y, and Z type of unit. But it gives us more of what we need and helps us. When you're looking at a number like 900 of that many housing units that you need, it's not going to be any one type of housing. We can't just have the same type of housing that you pop up. There needs to be a variety. And this project represents a nice variety within itself, in addition to everything else that we have. And as these units, you know, that, you know, become available and come online, that's going to help the situation. Houses that are being bought today that would be perfectly suitable for a family of four, a family of two, someone who just graduated college. The reality is those are getting bought up by people that would rather live in a development like this, would rather live in a building like the Marquette. But they're buying what is available. So we need to build more of all types. I'm very excited about this.
Dino. All right, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve a planned unit development located west of M63 and southerly of the CSX railroad property at Upton and Whitewarm Drives, with the address of 215 and 230 Upton Drive, and located in the W Water Recreation District, consisting of three parcels and 19.5 acres of land, requested by Harbor Shores Community Redevelopment LLC to allow site improvements, including a private street development of seven buildable areas, creating 105 dwelling units. Outdoor recreation area, marina with 77 boat slips, surface parking, and three future development sites, along with a total of 36 specific waivers for the entire development. And including individual buildable areas as found listed in the staff memorandum pages 66 through 72, and engineering drawings found on page 89 through 101 for the August 7, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, and based on the 14-page document prepared by Abbott Marsh dated July 2025, with project number 22-0197-15-89-101, as it meets the required standards under the sections 13.3.1, 13.3.2, 13.6.1, and 13.6.3 of the zoning ordinance, with the condition that the city staff review and approve all grading and engineering plans associated with the development of the...
Support.
Right. Do we need public comment again since we already had it in the public hearing?
That's the next.
I didn't catch that. Can you read it again?
Excuse me, already have to...
One more time. We don't need to do it again on this one? No. Okay. All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Siroa?
Yes.
Commissioner Elrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item, I think you're up again. We have another public hearing for 520 State and 515 Market Streets. Market and State LLC, special use for eight short-term rental units in the R3 multiple-family residence district when adjacent to a residential district or use. Public hearing starting at 8:07 PM.
So the planning commission was able to conduct a public hearing during their August 7 meeting. They heard a presentation from the applicant who's requesting eight short-term rental, up to eight, there's eight dwelling units in the building, one in the basement, which does not qualify for short-term housing, short-term rental. The planning commission heard the presentation from the applicant. In addition to nine different residents expressing concerns about the project, which I think many of them are here. I did summarize their, find their comments on page 282 of the staff memo. And I think they'll, it'd probably be best if they just explain what their concerns are. In the end, the planning commission had concerns about, after hearing the two different presentations, concerns about eliminating, decreasing the number of affordable dwelling units, after receiving reports about housing concerns throughout the city and throughout the state. The existing use of the building for residential dwelling units helps to create a buffer between the commercial uses to the north and the residential uses to the south. There's concern about proposed uses creating a non-harmonious neighborhood if it was converted to short-term rental. The zoning ordinance regulations help create processes to help create a desirable community that exists today for the residents to live in and people that want to visit. There are concerns about how the short-term rental unit would be managed. As some members stated, they do live in areas where short-term rental does exist and find it... The units that work best are where the property owner is living onsite or across the street or in the very close vicinity. And the desire to keep, maintain workforce housing in the community. They concluded it would be a negative impact. As such, the motion was to recommend denial of this request, which was supported by a vote of 6 to 0. I'll let the applicant go through his presentation. And then, like I said, I think most, a lot of the residents that spoke expressing concern are here. And I think it'd be best that they speak for themselves. In addition, in your packet today, four additional letters did get added. And you have those in it as part of it. The applicant did appear before the zoning board of appeals back in June for a request for a variance for setback, or not setback, but for number of onsite parking spaces. The building has no onsite parking right now. And the ZBA concluded, based on the findings, that there would be no net increase in required parking. So they were fine with the non-conformity to be expanded onto this proposed change of use, with the stipulation that if the city commission came up with a different number of short-term rental units, then that would be the variance, that would be limit, be maintained, would be a lower amount than the eight units having no onsite parking. So Brian Barrett's here, he can give his presentation.
Okay, thank you.
That's not a good sign, because I have a full cup of coffee. I appreciate you going late into the night to hear us. My name is Brian Barrett, and I am the... My name is Brian Barrett, and I am the owner of five twenty and five fifteen, State Street and Market Street. We are seeking approval of our special use permit for eight short-term rentals. The property was constructed around nineteen thirteen. It's a nine-unit apartment building, but we're only seeking approval for eight units to be short-term rentals. We've worked hard over the years to maintain the turn-of-century charm and original characteristics of that period. The property consists of eight units, and each unit is approximately eleven hundred square feet. They have, generally speaking, three bedrooms, one bathroom, a living room, dining room, and a kitchen. Some have balconies. The occupancy is generally six people, as we have three bedrooms, most units. There are some units that have two bedrooms, and we're limited to four occupants in those units. We've owned the property for more than fifteen years. My wife and I have been members of this community for more than thirty-five years. Considering how much there is to discuss, I would like to just provide a summary of how we meet the standards that we must meet. There are four standards, as you know. So I'd like to begin with that. The first standard is a special use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in a manner harmonious with the character of the adjacent property and the surrounding area. From the beginning, all I've asked is that the various board members take a realistic look at where our property sits and the surrounding area. Look at the context in which our property sits. Our building is in alignment with the character of the surrounding properties. It's the first building, I'm going to assume it's probably the first building that was built in that area, so it is the, the character of the area. To the north are parking lots. There's more than three hundred parking spaces in those lots. To the east is the downtown district, and that's commercial. To the west is the Boulevard Hotel, immediately to the west. It's more than eighty-five rooms in that hotel. To the south is a park. It's R one, but it's a park. The only house that we are immediately adjacent to is southeast kitty corner to our property, and that is run as a short-term rental. So we are not immediately adjacent to any house, any residential house. No exterior changes are proposed, no other changes will be made to the building. The use will remain the same. The only difference is that we're seeking to be able to utilize the short-term rental market. There's no difference in those two tenants, the, the short-term rental tenant nor the long-term tenant, term tenant. The only difference, actually, is well, they'll be spending their time and spending their money. Short-term rentals, this board has recognized the significant impact that it can make economically on the downtown district, and we are uniquely situated to provide such benefit, more so than any other properties you'll find in this city. The profile for short-term rentals, it's important to understand, we've been renting out one of our units as a furnished apartment. We are limited to at least a minimum of thirty days, and it's our experience that the, the folks that have rented there are the pro, fit the profile of a short-term rental, renter. And our experience has shown us that there's generally one or two tenants, one or two renters. On occasion, we've had a four-member family. They drive one car, generally speaking. Never more than two cars have, in the last two years, have we had in this furnished apartment. And it's been wonderful. It's been a terrific experience. We have a five-star rating on Airbnb. We've hosted people from all over the world, let alone the U S. We've had people from India, Japan, and even Laos. It's been a wonderful experience for us, for the city, and those who want to experience the city. Our short-term rentals are and will continue to be operated in a way that respects the current nature of the neighborhood, as it has for the past eighteen years under our management. We have, will provide twenty-four-seven local property management and response, guest screening to prevent disruptive behavior through the application of our vetting and verification policy, which I'd like to explain exactly what that means in a minute. We enforce house rules that include quiet hours from ten at night to nine in the morning, and occupancy limits. And we also maintain ongoing communication with neighbors in the city to address any concerns that may come up. I would like to take a moment to provide a summary of our vetting and verification process, because it's very important that you understand how we operate, and that's one of the key elements in the standard that we must meet. We currently use Airbnb as our third-party platform, and we build on their own vetting policies. Our renter must have a four-point-five or higher Airbnb rating, and they must be at least thirty years of age or more. On Airbnb, you can rent an apartment at eighteen. We require them to be thirty years old. A renter is not allowed to auto-book. What happens is when the guest looks at our property and wants to rent, they click reserve. This sends us a message that there is a request to book. We have twenty-four hours to evaluate that guest. We evaluate their profile, and we actually reach out and speak to them and communicate with them. And we have a conversation on who they are, what they're doing in town. This gives us a lot of information to be able to avoid all those tenants that we hear horror stories about, and we've been successful with it. We explain the house rules and the quiet hours, and who will, who is allowed to be on premises. Lastly, and most importantly, we meet each tenant at the property when they arrive to get the keys to verify a hundred percent who's renting the property. It's very important, it's been a very effective policy that many, many short-term operators do not do, because it takes time. This policy has produced very good tenants. They're very quiet, respectful of the property. We've had families that have been on vacation, three families, three separate families. One family, a fourth family was here on a work program at Whirlpool. Another party was, involved two adults that were engineers that came into town to work on a engineering project for a local company. And three, another visit was three engineers that were working at the, a local nuclear facility. So these are, these are the general profile of the folks that we attract into our property. There's another factor that brings these folks to our property, and that is, we only have three bedrooms. We only allow, we, we can allow six, but we actually only allow five guests. So those, those folks that are looking for a big party do not look at our property. It's too limited in its space. And it's worth noting that we don't have pull-out beds in our living rooms or the dining rooms. We have three bedrooms or two bedrooms, and there's beds only in those rooms. And probably the most significant factor here is we only have one bathroom. And it, and it, after looking at how we've been attracting these tenants, it really, actually, someone else mentioned it to me, the one bedroom really limits a lot of the big groups. They just, they, they're looking for something that's bigger that they can pack more people into. And all of this results in the profiles that I just explained to you. We've supported and continue to support the city's, the city commission's goal to increase economic activity through short-term rentals. You have all identified that as a very useful tool, and you adopted that ordinance two years ago. Our location is ideal for this goal. It's uniquely located, like no other properties are. If you stand at our property and look south, shoulder to shoulder is commercial use. We are not in R one, we're in R three. And the hotel is immediately next door. We are consistent use in the place that we stand. In conclusion, for this standard, as the Z B A has determined, overall, our proposed use is harmonious with, with the R three district, reflecting thoughtful design, responsible management, and alignment with community values. That's the big standard. The second standard is the special use shall not change the essential character of the surrounding area. As I mentioned, the building, I believe, is the essential character, as it was probably the first building built there. The building will remain residential in appearance and function and use with no exterior changes or signage added. The surrounding area includes commercial and high-density residential properties that serve both long-term and seasonal tourism. Our location naturally supports short-term stays without introducing incompatible uses. Guests will follow the same expectations as traditional tenants with house, house rules, guest vetting, twenty-four-seven local management. Many of these standards overlap with each other. As the hour is late, I'll move forward and summarize a little bit more. In conclusion, for this standard, this special use will not alter the essential character of the area, but will instead contribute to a well-balanced, professionally maintained, higher-density residential environment aligned with the R three district and the city's economic goals. The third standard in, to summarize it, the special use must not harm public health, safety, or welfare. It should avoid creating excessive traffic, noise, pollution, runoff, and so forth. We recently received, as mentioned, a parking variance from the Z B A. Their sole task was to evaluate the impact of parking. They granted us a unanimous decision of variance from the parking requirements. To continue on, there are no other features that produce smoke or fumes or any of the other items listed. In conclusion, the special use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the persons or property, and will operate quietly and responsibly within the district. Lastly, the special use will not place demands on public services and facilities in excess of current capacity unless planned improvements have already been scheduled for completion. The, in summary, the proposed use is not being changed, essentially. This is a self-contained, professionally managed operation that stays within the city's existing service capacity and does not place excessive demand on public services. I may add that our application has been submitted and proposed that be made, and I guess it is part of the record. The explanation of meeting those standards are in great detail in that application. I would like to also now provide a clear summary of the key issues that brought us to the city commissioners meeting tonight. First, as, as briefly discussed, the zoning board of appeals approved a parking variance on June twelfth. Again, their job was solely to evaluate the parking requirements. This was unanimously approved. In their findings, they stated the variance would not be detrimental to neighboring properties or the surrounding communities. This is their finding. The parking requirements for short-term rentals is identical to the current requirement of two spaces per unit. Therefore, our proposed use will not increase the need for parking. Secondly, we appeared in front of the planning commission as part of our, as at the beginning of our special use permit request on August seventh. Despite the Z B A's ruling, the planning commission voted unanimously against recommending approval of our petition. The deliberations focused almost entirely on parking, despite already being resolved by the Z B A. The board members mentioned the loss of affordable housing as a secondary issue. During the meeting, the chairperson acknowledged the city policy for short-term rentals and its parking requirements have changed from the adoption of the short-term rental two years ago by this board, that the planning commission is not in quote lockstep with the city commission on this issue. And the issue she's referring to is the removal of parking requirements for short-term rentals. She continued on by saying the planning commission opposed the removal of the parking requirements from the recently adopted short-term rental ordinance, and that the planning commission still maintains the requirement that all short-term rentals must have dedicated parking. This is why almost all the conversation was on parking. Ultimately, the commission's decision rested on speculation, assumptions that our property would require twenty-four to forty-eight parking spaces, an estimate not grounded in reality or evidence. The facts on the parking is short-term rentals require fewer spaces than long-term rentals. Long-term tenants are parked three hundred and sixty-five days a year, whereas the short-term rentals are active far less than that. At most, they're probably there for about eight weeks during the busy season. That, that's when parking is at its most strained. As mentioned earlier, for the past two years, we've rented a furnished apartment on a thirty-day basis, and as, as I mentioned, we basically have one car per unit. The planning commission ignored this. The planning commission ignored the fact that we sit immediately adjacent to three hundred parking spaces. Conclusion, for this matter, the zoning board of appeals has already affirmed that our proposed use satisfies, satisfies all standards related to parking requirements. The planning commission's objectives were speculative, inconsistent with the ordinance and newly established city policy related to short-term rentals, and contrary to the facts on record. Furthermore, the planning commission's decision wasn't proper for two reasons. They base it on a parking requirement that we were given a variance for. This was improper. Secondly, they classified us as affordable housing. I don't understand where they got affordable housing from. Affordable housing carries a very specific definition defined by the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. I don't know where they, I, I reviewed the standards because I was afraid I missed something. But for them to mention that, two of the board members on the planning commission mentioned specifically they are concerned about the loss of affordable housing, and this is the second reason why their decision wasn't proper. Lastly, I would like to address the, the objectives that you're about to hear from. It's a small group of folks that live in the neighborhood to the south of the R three and Commercial District. There are a small group of people that have moved to a commercial area. The commercial area did not move to those folks. I don't understand why they live in there. They're obviously very upset about anything, any progress or development that goes on in the downtown district. And you've heard many of them object to almost everything that was discussed here today. All the positive, terrific ideas, they're up here objecting to it. So I want to make sure that we understand who these folks are when they stand up here and object to mine as well. You'll hear from these folks exaggerated stories and of wild behavior of people in our community that simply are not founded in reality. The planning commission chairperson agreed with this. She also stated that whatever bad actors have been seen out there are not necessarily tenants of a short-term rental. And furthermore, none of these stories are related to our tenants or our petition. And the folks are rather hypocritical. They operate short-term rentals in their neighborhood, yet oppose ours and others as well. They somehow claim that they are the only ones that can run a short-term rental appropriately. They've taken multifamily homes and converted them into single-family homes. They're by contributing to the loss of housing in our community. I want to make it clear, we are not in the R one district. We are in commercial district. This is where you want short-term rentals, and this is where we are located. There's concerns about shortage of housing. I think what we've heard here today solves that problem magnificently. The Marquette is a hundred units, Lookout Point Apartments fifty-six units, Bering Hills Golf Club is soon to be two hundred or more units. And Harbor Shores continues to develop down by the, with the new Marina, over a hundred units. What you're doing as a board is working. We've seen activity that we haven't seen in the last forty years here. I encourage you to continue doing it. You're doing the right thing. And our short-term rentals fit that puzzle. We can contribute significant economic activity in the downtown district that this city so desperately needs. So in conclusion, I respectfully ask for approval of our special use permit. And I invite you to ask me any questions that you may have concerns about. I asked this from the planning commission. We did discuss parking. We didn't discuss affordable housing. That was not allowed in our discussion. So I would appreciate a conversation on your concerns and what would, what would stop you from voting for the positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to commission comments or questions, we are going to take a brief recess, five minutes. So we could, we've been sitting here for two and a half hours. Why don't we take a break and be back in five minutes? We need to do a little pause on the public hearing.
Right.
Eight thirty-four. Okay. You ready? All right, we will come back together at eight forty to, let's see, I think we were on city commission questions. So any questions from the city commission for our applicant?
I think not so much questions. I mean, I understand what, what your ask is and what, what you're wanting to do, you know, with, with it. I mean, I think you make, make some good points about the physical geography of where your property is located and where it relates to. And also, I guess, a little less concern is the parking requirements. I'm not as worried about the parking requirements. I think the planning commission needs to revisit and give a, give a rerun around to the parking requirements in general. I know they were just recently, you know, lowered, but I think, you know, that was a long time ago that they had lowered the downtown, you know, parking requirements, started that review process. And at the time, they didn't really evaluate eliminating parking minimums, which is a different conversation. But my point is, I'm less concerned about parking as it relates to your project, to be completely honest with you. I'm more concerned with what we are being procedurally asked to do is to permit short-term rentals in an R three district, which historically we have not, you know, allowed that to happen. So that's
We do.
Not in this one, though.
Right. It's, it's because of its proximity to R one that requires the, the extra approval.
I mean, I guess, I don't, I don't have any questions. I understand, but I'm less, I just wanted you to know. I'm less concerned with the parking, you know.
In the, in the, it's the R one that's triggering it, and it's important to know that there's no housing. R one is implicates, assumes we're talking about a home. And we're not adjacent to a home. We're adjacent to a park, library, an eighty-five-room hotel, commercial district, parking lots. So you see that what's triggered this review is really not present.
But it is in a buffer zone that's next to the park, that's next to the whole neighborhood, correct? So it, it could change the character of the surrounding area. There'll be like, there could be like forty extra people a week coming in and out of there. Is that possible scenario with a short-term rental?
That's not, that's not the experience. That's what I've tried to explain to the planning commission. We have a two-year track record. Generally speaking, we have two people.
In the, in the one, in the one unit.
In the one. That would be sixteen people. But my long-term tenants are sixteen people anyways. There's no, there's no change.
But they're there consistently. I mean, it's not, it's not a rotating.
What does the rotation have? What, what's the negative impact of a, of a rotating? People come in once a week. Why is that? Because that, you have to balance that against the economic benefit that the downtown district will receive. No other short-term rentals in the entire city will have the impact we will. So that's the balance that you must make as a board member. It's the same. The long-term tenants are the same as the short-term tenants in their numbers, in their parking, in their activity, and we have two years of track record showing this.
Is the house that you were saying was adjacent, that's the short-term rental, that's a grandfathered?
Yes, I believe so. It's southeast of our property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other commission comments before we move to public comments?
I have a question for Kristen. I'm just looking at, I think it's on page two ninety-nine, which is a, which is a drawing map, and it looks like the downtown, I'm just wondering how, how we wound up with the situation we did in that there's the downtown district. Immediately to the west, there's a downtown district immediately to the east. But then to the northeast, there's an R three, multiple-family residence district. It seems to hop around. It would seem like this whole block should be in the downtown district.
So the D downtown district does not allow residential dwelling units on the first floor, street level? And Mr. Barrett's building, that's what's on the street level is, is a dwelling unit. Same with the building to the northeast, and I believe there's like, I think there's at least fifteen units in that building. So I think that's why when they created the zoning map in two thousand and seven, when they adopted the zoning ordinance, those two parcels were carved out as R three because of the, what's allowed, how the, our, the D district is created and what types of uses you want there.
It kept them conforming.
Gotcha. And Mr. Barrett, I know you said you had one unit in the basement, and how many units are on the first floor? How many are on the second floor?
One in the basement, four on the first floor, and four on the second floor. The building, it's generally known as five-twenty state. It has one tax dent number. But it's, it's, it's almost as if it's two separate buildings that are built together. So you can't walk through all the hallway. There's four, there's two units, first floor, two units, second floor, and then at five fifteen, it's two units.
Did you ever give any consideration to a plan that doesn't convert all eight above-ground units to short-term?
Yeah, we, we would consider that. If, we, we did the eight because for efficiency, we're to go through it again. It would take years to convert all eight units over. I mean, we're not, we have, we have relationships with our tenants. We have, we have ten, I still have a tenant that's been there for eighteen years that I had, she was my first tenant. So we're not throwing anyone out. It would take a long time to get through to eight. We only applied for the eight because of efficiencies. If you are indicating taking perhaps four of the units?
I was just looking at two different ways. If it were in the downtown district, only the upper four would, would qualify, but then you wouldn't be able to have any residential on the, on the lower. So that doesn't work. It's just a unique building in a unique location, and it's a unique opportunity for the city. So there's a lot of stuff that is outside of what some of the zoning ordinances were intended for. So I'm just wondering if there's a hybrid solution around this that maybe says, plus, it's a, it's a, it's a way to dip our toe in to see what the experience is. And you indicate yourself, it's a long-term process to convert these units. And I'm wondering if it's something where you might revise your request to say one or two units and have that considered, and then we get a, we get a year or so of experience on those one or two units. It help, it may prove some of the neighbors' concerns, or it may disprove and alleviate some of the concerns. And it might be, might be a way forward. It's just a unique property in a unique location. So I think it deserves special consideration. But I, but I hear the, I hear the concerns, and this might be a hybrid solution to consider. I'm just asking you, is that something you would consider readdressing this commission in that?
I agree that it's very unique. It's, in fact, one of the ZBA board members likened it to spot zoning. It's, it's a little bit more about the history, just, just for some background. When they built that, the hotel, it's my understanding they took some residential homes down. In fact, I saw a picture on some wall of those homes. And I'm like, oh, that's what they removed to build the hotel. So there was more residential there. It's just that the commercial has been filling in all the way to Market Street. But sorry, to answer your question, is yes, we, we're confident in our operations. But what would make sense is to, to perhaps approve four on five-twenty State Street. Again, it will still take me time to incorporate those.
I think this, this entire thing is a, is a good illustration of how complicated some of the zoning, you know, things are and whatnot. And one of the hesitations is we already have a very complicated code. And I balk at the notion of making something super complicated even more complicated by adding in another special use. And if I add this, approve this special, you know, because like you pointed out, there are some geographical considerations with your particular property that would not be true for other properties in R three. But if I grant you a special use, I'm setting a precedent for other people in an R three to then use the same logic. And those homes will not have the same geographical thing that you have, right? That is to say that while I hesitate to consider granting a special use for, I think the neighborhoods in R three is best left for, you know, the residential. But you have a unique geography, and I think there is some serious consideration to the question of is your property actually part of the downtown? And I, I fully think we should, you know, look at a lot of the regulations and zoning rules that we have even in our downtown. We're gradually improving them. We keep coming at them piecemeal, you know, and we'll eventually one day completely overhaul them and make them conducive to growth in an efficient manner, but we're not there yet. We keep identifying these, these piecemeal things. And I think the real question that we need to be evaluating with your property is whether or not it's a piece of the downtown itself. And if we can do an application to get it to be part of downtown as opposed to an R three district, and then work within our guidelines that we have available to us, that, but I cannot deny what you have said. It is, it is part of the downtown, and I think you make a very strong case to
In fact, if you look at the corner of Market and State, right at the corner of our property, and you look down, there's a sticker that says, welcome to the downtown district.
It's
But, uh, at the very beginning of all of our, when we were thinking about what to do and how to proceed through this process, we originally thought about approaching the city about a text amendment. And, uh, to the effect of allowing short-term rentals in R three districts that are immediately adjacent to the downtown district. That would solve your problem with precedence set for other R three, because they would have to meet that other requirement. And, and there's not many R three adjacent. You'd have the, the property northeast of us. As mentioned, that's an R three. Not sure if there's any other R three adjacent to the downtown district. But that would be a, a clear solution for that, because it is very unique and we're struggling with.
Other questions? Could we still have a public comment? We have to close the public hearing and then we will deliberate on this in our next agenda item. So any questions for the applicant before we move on?
No.
Okay. All right. Why don't we move on to public comment then? Um, anyone wanting to give public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, um, and address your questions to the commission.
Good evening. My name's Callie Noakes and I live at one one oh four State Street. And as you can hear from my slightly dodgy accent, I wasn't born here, but my wife and I actually came to the city for a day trip just over a year ago and we didn't leave. Um, and we, we, we bought a house in a rather impulsive fashion. But I mentioned this, um, because what drew us to this city is the really kind of special sense of community that I fear proposals like this threaten. Even a cursory online search finds a litany of cautionary tales from towns and cities around the countries. Stories of, that paint a stark picture of the impact of Airbnb's on local communities. We've talked a lot about this evening about dwindling population and, and dare I say, an aging population. And a recent survey found that sixty percent of potential home buyers would either reduce or completely withdraw their offer if a short-term rental is nearby. Grim reading that doesn't feel aligned to the vision we've heard about tonight. We heard assurances about the fact that guests would be verified. I propose that verification is a clever marketing term from Airbnb, not a safety standard. And I should know, I work in marketing. Airbnb verification just means that a person has a valid ID or a phone number. It does not mean that they have been vetted for safety, criminal background, or suitability as a neighbor. It's window dressing, not real protection. And I do want to add that I don't think the profiles of previous long-term tenants should be considered here. They should be disregarded. The demographic for short-term rentals is completely different. And I, I know the proposer, uh, talked about some of the objections that you would hear today and mentioned that perhaps some of the residents of the street were against progress. I wholeheartedly disagree. I was fully aligned with all of the other proposals that we've heard tonight. And we've heard a lot about progress, about change. But this exciting evolution of our city has been well-considered. Progress that bolsters the fabric of our community. This proposal is not that and would set a dangerous precedent for further creep of short-term rent, rentals into residential areas. Because when community homes turn into hotels, the fabric of community unravels slowly like a loose thread on a jumper, but irreparable damage nonetheless. This is not just my opinion, but one supported by an independent academic study titled Community Consequences of Airbnb. And it's for this reason that I believe the clear recommendation of the planning commission should be ratified and this proposal should be denied. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Lori Capel and I live at six oh eight State Street. It's the old green boarding house right south of Bear Park and standing in my yard, I could probably throw an apple and hit the apartment building that we're talking about. So even though it's not immediately adjacent, it's, it's very close. But I don't really want to talk about that. I want to talk about something else and give you a snapshot in time as we address and consider the, uh, standard number C that said this apartment building should not be detrimental to safety or traffic. I had submitted a photo sheet. I don't know if you all received it in your packets. What this is, is it's a one-minute snapshot in time. It's from the intersection of State and Market at eleven forty-two in the morning and it runs till eleven forty-three. And so I'll talk a bit about it. The apartment building appears and it's on the right. The pictures show parents biking with small children, a family of five, pedestrians crossing, a vehicle making an illegal U-turn and people unloading in the street. This snapshot reflects what I've observed every summer for the past ten years. Market Street, as you can see in the photos, often functions and a lot of people aren't aware of this unless they're in that area regularly. It often functions as a single-lane bottleneck during our tourist season. And I assume that happened because we needed more parking for the library when all of that was put together. Because the other side streets only have parking on one side. Is that correct? But that area has parking on both sides, so only one vehicle fits through at a time. So if people are waiting in the intersection, someone's coming, someone's on Lake Boulevard coming. It can be quite a circus. So uh, library, traffic, farmers market visitors, skateboarders, beach goers, cabana bicycle buggies, and people walking paths all converge here. At peak times, it can feel like a hive of activity, which is exciting, but also unpredictable. And it only takes one misstep for someone to get hurt. Now imagine adding weekend guests for eight short-term rentals rather than long-term rentals and no designated parking or loading and unloading zones. This area is very congested during tourist season. I don't know about the parking lots and where they're at, but I can imagine probably full.
Could please wrap up your comments?
Did I go three minutes already? Oh my gosh. Okay. I just have a couple paragraphs to read if that's okay.
Just try and make it as quick as possible.
Okay. So I think guests will circle for a spot, possibly inevitably stop in the travel lane, creating backups and more importantly, putting children on bikes, pedestrians and other drivers at risk. We all want to attract new visitors and grow our city's reputation. But growth has to be safe and sustainable. And visitors who experience confusion, gridlock or near misses at an intersection so close to the bluff and downtown are less likely to come away with a positive impression that we all want. By saying no to this permit, we're ensuring that our city continues to be welcoming, safe and well-managed visitor experience. So I urge you to please deny this request based on standard C, traffic and safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment?
I'm Anne Gane. I live at two hundred Sunny Bank. I am actually for this short-term rental. I'm not for every short-term rental. But I get asked on a daily basis, especially during tourist season. People call me, they say, hey, is there a place we can just rent for a week or two or, and we're out of options. I think this is so close to the downtown district. It's not only gonna feed the restaurants and the shopping and the retail, because people are gonna flow right in there. They don't have to drive there. They're gonna be walking from this location. And I can appreciate the safety aspect of things. But you have to remember, most of these people that will be coming in are coming in, as you stated, in one car, maybe max two. And you're gonna have that whether it's a short-term rental or not. That person who's renting that on a long-term basis is gonna be coming home on a daily basis. They may have friends over, they might have family over. We're not restricting them. So I think, given the situation, and I'm not for every short-term rental. I have one in my neighborhood. And it is so well-run, you would never know it's a short-term rental. And the people I see coming in are families. They have young children. I usually make a point when I see them walking up the street to welcome them to Saint Joe. And that's how families are vacationing now. They want to keep their kids under one roof. They don't want to have to get two separate hotel rooms. They don't want to take, maybe if they're visiting downtown Saint Joe, they don't want to get a hotel room that's five miles away. They want to get here and enjoy the walkability of everything. Or if they're handicapped, they can most certainly use a wheelchair to get to downtown. Now that we have handicapped intersections, we've paid close attention, attention to that. So I, I am for it in this case. I think I, I welcome it. He's got a very good business plan. I've never met him before tonight, but I listened to what he has to say. He's running a smart business. He's obviously put restrictions on his rentals, on the age limits, the time, on when there's quiet hours and so forth. And that's what's really key, in my opinion, to a good, successful short-term rental. I also will add, when my house, I had to move six times over six months because my house was under construction, we had delays. And it was so difficult to find. I couldn't find a place that we'd just rent for six months. So I hopped from place to place to place and I actually spent six weeks of that. About four weeks of that time in a short-term rental on State Street. It was a three-unit building. You would never know it was a short-term rental. It was peaceful. It was quiet. I had a parking spot. I could walk to downtown Saint Joe. You'd never know. It was very well-run. And I think that is what we need to look like. And I was so grateful to have a place that I could stay for a very short period. Done.
Perfect. Thank you. Other public comment?
My name's David Vandenberg. I live at six oh seven Pearl Street, around the corner from the area under consideration. Um, I want to applaud Mr. Barrett. I think he does have a good business plan. I think he's thought things through. I think he's got a great model. He's aware of any of the issues. And my concern is not so much how he might run a short-term rental. I'm sure he would run it admirably. My concern is the historic district. The historic district is unique. That's why it is a state-recognized historic district. It is, uh, in a sense, an endangered species. And like spotted owls and other kinds of endangered species, it needs to have its habitat protected. And we've been very happy to have Mr. Barrett protecting the northern boundary of the state historic district. That's why that area is designated R three. Um, yes, it is multi-use, multi-residential housing. Uh, but it is not simply, um, downtown district either. Um, it has some restrictions put on it. It recognizes that there is a need for a buffer zone, if you will, between the commercial downtown district and the old historic residential district and other residential districts that might border it. And contrary to what Mr. Barrett said, no, the historic district did not move into the commercial district and decide to roost there. The historic district was there since the late eighteen hundreds. And, uh, the commercial district is, is what has grown appropriately so. Everything that we've heard tonight, uh, we applaud. We think progress is great, development is great. Um, we're glad that the city commission is thinking this through very carefully and moving ahead very wisely. Uh, we think that that's a terrific thing. You are protecting, in a sense, uh, your own history, our own history, our shared community. And we simply want to do the same thing with the historic neighborhood. It's a unique asset. It, uh, is hard to find something like it. The state recognized that when they declared it a historic district. Um, short-term rentals do bring unique challenges that long-term rentals don't bring. They can be managed. And, um, I think Mr. Barrett has identified many of the challenges and has a good plan for managing them. But I don't think this is the place to manage it. Thank you.
Thank you. Their public comment?
My name is Janet Boyd. I live at ten nineteen State Street. And I'd like to say that I am in favor of the Marquette development. It sounds very exciting and I'm looking forward. Question. Um, all evening long, I've heard about, um, the need for nine hundred new housing units by two thousand and twenty-eight. Frankly, we're worried that our city is losing population, uh, due to our lack of, and I'm going to use the word affordable housing. And by affordable, I mean, uh, homes, um, single-family homes. Uh, so I'm talking in particular about rental units. By turning this building into a short-term rental, now we've lost eight units that a young family, a couple, an older retiree, indeed a variety of people could call home. And in fact, Mr. Barrett was talking about a over fifteen years. These are people who would support our city year-round and form community. We have already put in place short-term rentals in our downtown. There's a possibility for more to be built above the stories there and the new building, the Marquette going in downtown will also have that possibility. And I understand that the apartments, the, the man mentioned that the apartments won't be short-term rentals, but I assume the condos could be, that there's a possibility of that. Through a zoning change, we've turned our library into a hotel. Wouldn't it be in our favor to see where this leads before we turn another building into a short-term rental, taking away the very thing we need to ensure growth and diversity in Saint Joe? Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
I'm Dave Wass. I live at twelve oh three State Street. I don't want to go over some of the things that have already been talked about, but short-term rentals, uh, became an issue in the town I lived in, in South Haven a few years ago. And it started out with just a few and gradually grew and, uh, some folks from out of state would come and buy a nice quaint house and say, I'll use this as a short-term rental for a while. And then when I retire, I'll come move into this nice, quiet neighborhood. Unfortunately, other houses did the same thing in that quaint neighborhood was not quaint anymore. And the people that have to live there, uh, and work there year-round found that as a, a, a big issue. We've kind of heard tonight about this property. The Marquette that could have condos turned into short-term rentals. And the property, uh, across the river, they could also have that. I do know in South Haven, after working in the school system there, the community changed and the number of school-aged children dropped dramatically. And I would hate to see that happen here in Saint Joe, going through some of the same processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello again. Anne Barnes, still at six oh eight Market Street. I, I moved. Um, I live right next door to the short-term rental that was grandfathered in at six oh three State. So I do have real stories, not exaggerated, that if you went back years, are on the public record because I have come before the commissions back then to explain. And that is why a big part of why we have ordinances now to protect the neighborhood and protect the residences. So I'm going to talk just a little bit here about, um, the, the safety and my experiences. Um, traffic, there are multiple vehicles that unload, I've watched it and load large quantities of their luggage, their recreational equipment, food beverages, um, coolers, sometimes camping equipment. I won't mention pets because he probably won't have pets, but all the while taking up parking spaces in the neighborhood or, or on the street. Um, just last week, there was a quiet family that was in there, a group of people, because, um, they wanted to gather together. And they had four vehicles, big vehicles, you know, S, you know, SUVs and things. So it does happen. Um, we've watched it, um, frequently. Almost every group that comes in there has multiple vehicles because they're gathering together from all parts. That's the great thing about short-term rentals is you can gather a, a whole family, a whole group. The noise. I shared, um, with the city back then, the story of Oliver. A youngster, um, with his family was there and I knew his name was Oliver because they said his name frequently active. And he apparently liked the sound he made when jumping up and down on the exterior cellar door that is on the exterior cellar door that is, I'm six foot away from that building on the one side. So another time, I mean, I've called the police multiple times over noises. One particular one was at 2:00 or 3:00 a.m. when some group there decided they would play soccer in this intersection, which is a safety issue right there, early in the morning, you know, the wee hours. So over the years, there were multiple sound violations after hours. I contacted the police. There were many inebriated youths and adults involved in those things. Another safety issue, our smoke and fumes. I have shared with previous city commissions the story of cognitively impaired renter who attempted to light a propane turkey fire within five feet of our wooden frame home without an emergency water source, which dovetails with the story of another renter who was under the influence of pot while overly dousing a charcoal grill with lighter fluid, causing an explosive flame within three feet of our front door. Meanwhile, another member of his group was upstairs on the back, exhaling the smoke out the second-story window because you're not to smoke anything in the building. So they'd taken the screen out and they were leaning out. Please. Odors. Another story with the city commission years ago regarded the stench of garbage that accumulates by different groups coming in. You could have a weekend group, a week group, and a weekend group come in. And that really did happen.
If you could finish your comments, please.
Yes, I am. Other renters just tossed their garbage outside the side door because the trash bins were full. That left, critters came and ripped it open and scattered around, and I cleaned it up. I also shared with the city commission years back about the time I was startled by an intimidating male renter at that place who was up on our front porch steps looking into our house. He was with a group that stayed at the rental for a week of casino entertainment per the signage on the van that picked them up. That was scary. Health. All of the above affected our health. We lost sleep, we were stressed, we breathed in smoke, fumes of all kinds. Our home could have caught fire on multiple times. My daughter was in the fourth grade when it became a short-term rental, so it was challenging to protect her health from what took place next door and spilled over to our home for years. There was behavior, light, glare, sound, smoke, and odor, and they don't stop at property lines or at the edge of a street. However, you can help with that. And so obviously, I'm asking you to decline his special variance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment? This isn't really a Q&amp;A opportunity. If you, I mean, I guess you already used up your time. No, thank you. Other public comment? Okay. Seeing no other public comment. Yes, absolutely. Item number seven.
Because I want to make sure that nothing slips into consideration here. The first gentleman mentioned reduction in population. The population, I think we're all in agreement, has decreased because the city has stagnated. And one way, one tool, is to utilize short-term rentals in and around that downtown district to revitalize it and bring economic stimulation, economic growth into the downtown district. That's how you're going to attract people here. The person also mentioned verified does not mean verified. I don't, I don't think he understands how we operate. You can absolutely verify at many, on many levels, who is renting from your unit. The last step on that is handing the keys over to the person who you rented to. So you can absolutely verify who you're renting to. Many of his comments were speculation and not really grounded in facts. Safety, the issue of safety, it's a public street. You're going to have congestion. You're immediately adjacent to the commercial district. I'm not sure what safety is unusual and caused by short-term rentals. The third, the fourth person that stood up and complimented us on our verification process does know somewhat about verification because he actually operates an Airbnb in the R1 district, in the historic district that he so cherishes and is here to protect. He operates an Airbnb in it. It's hypocritical. It's okay for him to operate it, but not us in an R3? It's very frustrating as someone who wants to help this city and invest money to face that type of attitude here in the city. Again, discussion of losing affordable housing. Again, I've asked that the city balance, the eight, eventually eight or whatever we're talking about, against the economic benefit into the district that we're immediately adjacent to. The gentleman talking about South Haven, that was, I'm certain that he's talking about Airbnbs in R1 district. It is pretty well-known that Airbnbs in R1 districts can lead to cannibalization of those neighborhoods, and that's absolutely not what we're talking about here. We're in an R3 surrounded by commercial. The last person, I'm sorry, the stories are not supported by the call log of the police department. It's my belief that these are exaggerations. Maybe they did happen, but who's to say they had anything to do with short-term rentals or anything to do with our petition and how we operate? And most of those stories, it's really an enforcement issue and not related to short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item then would be to close the public hearing. Can we get a motion to close the public hearing? No.
No.
No. This is a public hearing and... And that is something you can absolutely address outside of this public hearing today. We have business to get to, and we're going to move on with the public hearing, and then we have a motion to get to after that. So can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Support.
All right. Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Okay. That closes our public hearing at 9:19. We are going to move on to the next item. I believe, Kristin, you're, I don't know if you have any more to say on this.
Kristin, are you back up for the last item?
For the motion. Yeah, it's there. Okay. Now it is time for questions deliberation by the commission.
So I just want to make my comments. I agree with the people that have said you have a great plan. I think that you have good requirements and restrictions that you would want to put in. I agree that you have a unique piece of property there, but you are in the R3, and you do need to meet the requirements. And I feel like it would change the essential character of the surrounding area based on the proximity to the neighborhood homes. But that's just my opinion, and I don't know what the rest of the commission wants to say. And possibly, there's a different way to approach it. I wouldn't deny that.
I think echoing what Commissioner Binkley said as well. You know, I think there are aspects of this that can be discussed and considered, but part of, part of what our role is to, is to look forward into the community. And when we have so many compelling cases of neighboring towns where this short-term rental issue has absolutely ballooned, I think we need to be really, really careful of that when we're considering this vote. We did already approve short-term rentals in the downtown, in that D downtown district. They're operating, they're not completely full yet. If they were completely full and we had, and we had a different need for that, I think this would be a different conversation. But right now, we did recently make that change. Recently being, you know, within the, within the life of this commission. We recently made that change. And until those are booming and ready, I don't, I don't see a reason that we should move forward with more short-term rentals.
In my role as mayor, I get to go to these meetings with other leaders around the county and even outside of the county. And what I hear on repeat is that St. Joe has done it right when it comes to short-term rentals. As far as, you know, the law says you cannot outright restrict short-term rentals, which we have not done, but we've done a very good job of containing it into certain areas. So that's the downtown and the water district. And that's why this R3 is not automatically in. It's something for us to decide as a body, is it appropriate? And I would agree that is not harmonious with the neighborhood, that it is abutted up next against. So I would agree with the planning commission that short-term rentals in this property in the R3 would not be appropriate at this time.
And I would just ask the commission to, I would just ask the commission to really look at the general standards and spell out what your thoughts are and how they impact those standards, A through potentially D in particular.
And so I just want to make sure that my understanding is clear and that I'm not steering anyone in the wrong direction. My understanding is that, and I'm looking at you, Kristin, in the R3, short-term rentals are permissible. They are, they require an additional approval of the planning commission and the city commission when they are on the border with R1. Is that correct? Or is it adjacent to? My apologies, when they are adjacent to. And so I just want to clarify, R3, short-term rentals are allowed.
But not in...
When adjacent to an R1, as is the case here, it has to come for approval.
And we have to, we have to consider the standards.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure that the R3 is understood.
Right. So just to put on the record, I think that a short-term rental would not be harmonious with the character of the adjacent property in the surrounding area. And I do think it would change the essential character of the surrounding area.
B.
B. A and B.
A and B.
As I said before, I, I hear the argument on both sides, and I respect them. I'm having a hard time. The objection seems to be that a short-term rental is not harmonious with the neighborhood. And directly adjacent to the property in question is a, is a hotel. There's nothing more short-term than a hotel that is adjacent to the same neighborhood. So if, if hotel guests haven't changed the nature of the neighborhood, why would a short-term renter, which are basically the same clientele, only it might be more of a family-based in a short-term rental because it can put more, you know, more people into a unit? You don't want to divide a family, as somebody brought up. So I'm trying to weigh the objections and trying to have them make sense. And that's what I'm struggling with. And I wondered, just as a dialogue basis, if the commissioners that are opposed to the idea based on it not being harmonious with the adjacent neighborhood, how is that different than a hotel?
I think your point earlier that if it was D downtown district, this would not be a discussion. Like, I don't think it's a bad thing to have a short-term rental in that spot, but being that it's R3 and we want to protect the neighborhoods, I think it is subject to creep where we approve this, and then there could be more, and then it could really have a deleterious effect on the neighborhoods. So I think approving this is a dangerous step in that direction.
And again, I want to understand your objection, and I want to honor it. Do we have, because it's R3, it's, I am not for R1 outside of the districts that we've already outlined, short-term rentals. But R3 is a little bit different. And this, this particular property is so unique with regard to its proximity, its history, all those things, and the fact that it's adjacent to a hotel, which again, I just, I have a hard time coming to the conclusion that it will tremendously change the character of the adjacent historic district when a hotel hasn't done that, and it's been there since 1988. So I guess that's, that's what I'm struggling with. If the commissioners could help me bridge that, your understanding, that would be helpful to me.
Well, the hotel's not here requesting anything. They're already there. But this is, this is zoned, R3, the hotel isn't. I mean, we could work on rezoning, but...
Oh, if it's, if the objection is because of the specifics of the property and not the fact that it would necessarily change the harmonious nature...
Well, I think it's both, personally.
Okay.
But I mean, we have, we all have different...
I'm not, and I'm not arguing. I'm just trying to understand the point of view.
Yeah.
I just, I'm, why would a hotel be any different than a short-term rental? It, there's, how many, how many beds in the, or rooms in the hotel, 80?
Oh, I think that's about right.
80. So an 80-unit hotel hasn't, hasn't had a real influence on the district but an eight-person, an eight-room or a four-room. And I'll also go on to say, I don't think it would be for an eight-room approval. I think I would be for a four-room max, a trial, see how it goes. And, and I also, thinking back to the planning commission meeting, which I watched in full on the video, there was some discussion about, some municipalities have a structure that's set up for short-term rentals where there's a one-strike penalty of a fine, there's a two-strike penalty of a larger fine, and there's a three-strike penalty as potential loss of the unit as a, as a short-term rental. And I thought, you know, maybe that's something worth considering as well, which puts, which puts some safeguards, some guardrails, if you will, on a property like this. I'm trying to find a way to say yes to this because I think it's a unique property, and I think it's a unique opportunity, but yet provide the guardrails and assurance to the community that has concerns. And if it's, if it's the technicality of the R3 nature, then I think, I think we need to talk about a workaround. If it's, if it's more than that, if it's more principled than that, I just would like to define what the objection is.
Can I just jump in to say, and Kristin could shed more light on it, we do have the ability to revoke short-term rental permits if there are issues. Historically, we don't know of history issues with this property. Obviously, there's not been short-term rentals of this type with this property, but we can revoke.
Is there a defined metric for revocation, or is it just...
I, I am not steeped in that. We could review and return, you know, to discuss it further.
Do you know, Kristin?
Nine and a half years I've been here, there's been one property we had some issues with, and that was getting, it was a grandfather or a non-conforming use that's just begun. And those are a little different than a new use, like in the W district. There's probably, and Lori could step in too, probably ways to better structure how, you know, if violations happen, but to get a better resolve. You know, we don't get a lot of, you know, I get calls one day morning that there was a party at the house. Well, calling on Monday morning and the party was on Friday night, you know, that's part of the issue too. So there's only been one property that we had an issue with that we were able to work through to get them back on track to what was approved when they, when the ordinance was first adopted. I'm not aware of any other ones being revoked or issues coming up.
To clarify, your story was a hypothetical house, not this house in particular.
The house that we had an issue with? No, that was a real issue.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure.
A real issue, but with a different...
Different, different house, different property.
Not this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm torn. I understand the dilemma. I do think the hotel, like, faces the bluff. This faces the neighborhood. I feel like it's a different feel, but I, you know. How many R3 properties, like, if we're worried about creep, how many other properties could this happen to?
So there's the R3 property to the northeast of this one on State Street. I don't know how many apartments are in that one. There's an R3 on Wayne Street overlooking the river. There's, that's R3, those townhomes. I believe they have regulations within their condo association. Short-term rental is not allowed. There's R3 on Lake Shore Drive at the very south end of town. Those condos, I don't know, I don't remember the name of that condo association. And I believe they have worked overtime to eliminate short-term rental, and they do not allow it. That leaves a couple of large apartment complexes on Lake Shore Drive. And that they're, I mean, I've found people who were trying to do short-term rental in some of those properties, and that's been resolved immediately.
Would you know how many individual units potentially could be turned into short-term? If we were to approve this, and then we got all other R3 properties requesting...
Are you asking adjacent to residential zones?
Yeah.
Because the apartments wouldn't be adjacent to residential, would they?
All of...
The large apartment.
The large condo association on the west side of Lake Shore Drive is adjacent to residential, is own property. The apartment, the apartment complex on Cleveland is adjacent to residential, is own property. The apartment complex owned by Corwell Health, the new building under construction is adjacent to residential. And I think it says residential use or zoned residential. And there might be some residential uses on that street that backs up off of Hawthorne. I don't, it's kind of odd back there a little. And then the other big apartment complex on Lake Shore Drive, that's next to the hotel, next to the hotel. There's a row, row track, and then there's a part, there's residential behind that. And then the other one is you go like across from the bar... And then the other one is you go like across from the bar, Sam Bar, there's residential adjacent to that.
Yeah, I think the distinction here is none of those other properties are immediately adjacent to the downtown district.
Aren't immediately adjacent to what?
To the, to the downtown district.
With the exception of the one to the northeast.
Correct, the one kitty corner across the street.
MGM apartments.
So those are really the only two where this scenario would be similar.
But what does having the downtown, what does that have to do with it? It's, it's not like a criteria that we have to determine, it's.
Totally agree, it's just, it is unique. It is, it is closer to walking distance to patronage of downtown restaurants, businesses, et cetera. So I think it's unique in that regard, but you're right, it has nothing to do with it.
Well, I would think if you're thinking about approval, the potential need to approve something based on consistency with a previous decision, it would set a different precedent because of the, because of the fact that it's adjacent to the downtown. So if you're thinking about being cornered into a decision in the future, I would think it would change that criteria a little bit because the others are different. I don't know if I'm articulating that right.
Along the same vein of what you just said and what Commissioner Sharol was just pointing out, I mean, that's why to me the question becomes, you know, rather than considering, should I be doing a special use for this property? Should, you know, what I, what I think we should be doing instead is considering whether or not this property should be included in the downtown.
I would love that.
If it were in the downtown though, then he'd come back and ask for variance for four units on the first floor because it wouldn't be commercial. And have any residential, residential in the downtown.
Doesn't fit with the downtown.
And he has not requested rezoning, so that's really not before you tonight. And really, the request before you tonight is for the short-term rental.
But I think we're, I think we're talking about what our.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear.
No, I, that's what, I mean, we know what we're going to vote on. But I mean, to give this gentleman some direction and give some neighbors' direction on what, what we might be thinking.
So I think Mr. Barrett would like to ask for a continuation?
If we could table the matter, it sounds like it's very complicated and there are some opportunities to achieve assurances, to, to, for proper operations, limit the petition, to see how it goes. I would like to table it, request that it be tabled so we can talk about these things. Quite honestly, assuming approval here, my intention was to approach the city to create some type of board or committee or some group that can have some enforcement on bad management of short-term rentals. I think it's important. But I think perhaps we can talk about that, maybe contingencies on a three-strike rule applying to mine. We don't need that board in place, we can have contingencies on it.
And I think at minimum, that's, sounds like the responsible thing to do. I mean, this, if nothing else, you know, Mr. Barrett, your situation highlights, you know, a very, what is the best use of the zoning and where this property fits? And it's, it's a good op, like, you know, your, your case highlights a lot of the issues and complications of our zoning and, and some of the issues that we have. And I, I don't think you're the only one that's ever felt some of those things. And so I, I think it's totally appropriate to take some more time and really kind of dive even deeper, you know, into this one and see what we can craft as an opportunity to address, you know, this situation obviously, but also, you know, similar developments as, as we move into, you know, kind of a rezoning mindset. But I think a deeper dive is totally appropriate.
And separately, while it's tabled, I, you know, I know there's, there's strong feelings on both sides. I would certainly encourage dialogue amongst the community and Mr. Barrett, and hopefully find a solution that's workable. And it might be, it might be part of what the commission is able to tailor into this unique situation. Dialogue is always good, compromise is always good. We might find something in there that works for everybody.
If, if the commission does want to table it, we need a motion to do that.
Move to table this matter to allow for staff to conduct further research.
Support.
Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Thank you, we'll have that on a future meeting. Okay, Ben, Sue. Last item, we have a donation of Milton Park property. Is that you?
It is me. So I will try to make this quick. Milton Park, located on Niles Avenue, has been leased by this, from Whirlpool to the city since it's been in operation. Sorry, I'm not making, not talking very well at this point. Anyway, Whirlpool bought the property from St. Joseph Public Schools in 1977 for $50,000. At the time, they purchased it, it was limited to use as a public park. Whirlpool then turned around and leased it to the city. There was an initial tenure lease and then a second one that was in place after that time. So the city's been operating Milton Park as a city park under that lease agreement for all these years. Whirlpool has recently offered to convey the property to the city as a charitable donation. They've been kind of reviewing their properties and trying to clean up a few things. And you'll remember that the City Commission actually had vacated a parcel along Grave Street down by the Whirlpool Tech Center that was cleaned up earlier, earlier, that was part of the whole review. And Kaylee Whipper was here earlier today, was hoping she would stay, she's been instrumental in making this happen. But anyway, they have actually executed the quitclaim deed. It took a little bit of time, we did some due diligence and had a phase one environmental assessment of the property done, even though we didn't suspect anything was there as part of due diligence, we really needed to make sure. And that came back with no, no findings, no concerns. And so the request tonight is just to consider accepting Whirlpool's donation of the Milton Park property to the city.
Thank you, all right. Well, donated park always sounds good to me, any questions from the commission?
No.
Makes sense. Okay.
I move to approve the resolution to accept donation of real estate being the donation of the Milton Park property from Whirlpool Corporation.
Support. Pick your mic, I don't care.
Lights were.
Any public comment on the matter? All right. Come on up.
I have not moved from 608 Markesters, yeah, in Barnes. I just want to say that my great, great uncle, my grandfather, and I think my great-grandmother graduated from the school that is known.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, Abby, call the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All righty, we have a report vacancy update, is that you, Emily?
That's me.
Abby, take it away.
Just a very brief update, I just wanted to highlight, so in the agenda packet, there's a list of boards that have vacancies on it. It's so important for our boards to have full, a full group, full members. So we appreciate any interest. If you are interested or you know somebody that would be a good fit for one of the vacancies on our boards, I encourage you to call the clerk's office, I can email you applications. I can get you in contact with the staff person over the board if there's questions I can't answer. But we appreciate any and all interest, so thank you.
Thank you. We are now onto city comments, Emily, what do you got for us?
I'm going to be super quick. I just wanted to give a shout out actually to Abby. We, last meeting was our first meeting with a new agenda system. Super behind the scenes and no one should ever have to think about, but Abby spent a lot of time thinking about it. And it is so much more user-friendly for the staff and I hope it's more user-friendly for the commission. We've still got a couple of kinks that we're working out, we can't get it to number, but we will. So it was, it has really felt seamless to me, but I know Abby has done a huge heavy lift to make it feel that way. So just wanted to share my appreciation.
Hey, Abby. Yeah, Abby. All right, commission comments.
I've made a lot of comments already.
All right, all right. Hearing none, we have a request for closed session. Consider confidential information CBA strategy, can we get a motion to move into closed session?
I move to enter closed session to, to one, consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state law under MCL 15 dot 243 one J and Z, being confidential reports related to the city's computer information system and security measures, assessments and plans for which disclosure would impair the city's ability to protect the security of property and persons and that would provide a means of identifying, identifying a person's cybersecurity practices, procedures or methods, organizational information, system infrastructure, hardware or software. And two, for strategy connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement based on the city manager's request under MCL 15 dot 268 one dash C.
Okay.
Support.
Support. Abby, call the roll, public comment on the matter? Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Commissioner Ory?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
All right, you're welcome to stay, but we're going to go into closed session, we will pause.
She's got to turn on the recording, can't she?
Okay, go ahead.
I move to return to open session.
Support.
Public comment? Oh, Abby Colerole.
I appreciate you guys not immediately leaving.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Ree?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes. We need a motion for the closed session.
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement as presented.
I support.
Public comment? Abby Colerole.
I'm sorry, could you identify the collective bargaining agreement just so we have that?
The one that was presented during closed session?
Wow, there's no reference.
All right, I move to accept the agreement between the City of St. Joseph and the City of St. Joseph Employees Chapter and affiliate of Local 22757 and the Certified Collective Bargaining Agent AFSCME Michigan Council, American Federation.
I support.
Public comment? Abby Colerole. Commissioner O'Ree?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Searola?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our meeting at 10:57 PM.